We're live.
Okay, good. Melissa, will you call us to order?
Mayor Mark Sukup.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Rick Collins.
Rick, you gotta click off your audio. Click your audio on.
Present. Can you hear me now?
Yes. Okay. Councilmember Erin Pearson.
Here.
Councilmember Lisa Lake.
Here.
Councilmember Brett Hanson.
Here.
Okay, we do have an amendment to the agenda, something that I need to say. So as I've informed all of you since I was running for mayor and since I was there, as I used to own a CPA firm, Sukup Bush and Associates, I sold my interest in 2018. One of my clients is, was TST Engineering. They've been the engineering firm for the town since 2011. I'd like to make it clear that I do not have a legal conflict of interest with TST. In order to have a legal conflict with a outside entity, it must be a significant financial interest. TST pays SBA, my old firm and one that I do not have an interest in, a very minor amount compared to their annual revenues. In fact, less than 0.1% of their annual revenues comes from fees that TST pays to SBA. I want to make it clear, I do not have a legal conflict of interest. Nevertheless, for abundance of professionalism, I am going to recuse myself from any votes approving check payments to TST, which show up in our consent agreement. Therefore, I will be recusing myself. We've got four excellent council people that the town trusts. I totally trust in your vote. You do not need mine. All right, so we now have the consent agreement agenda. Any comments? Do I have a motion?
Uh, Mark.
Sorry, go ahead, Rick.
Yeah, I think you skipped public comment. Are we gonna have any public?
Oh, good point. Thanks a lot. We're gonna have it. I was going first on the consent agreement, but I think that's probably right. So we do have a number of public comments. Thanks, everybody, for sending in your comments. And I think there's two people that are going, Brian and maybe Matt are going to read them.
Yes, first we have Danny Bizzetti, a local business owner who's in the Zoom call. She's gonna address the council.
Okay.
And we'll read the other emails into the record.
Great, thanks Danny. Go ahead.
Hey, thank you all for having me today. I really do appreciate your time. And so I wanted to just talk and share what's been happening with my businesses. I know that you guys have a business relief program and thoughts and ideas of how to go about moving forward with it. So I thought I would share a little bit about my business. I'm not gonna take much of your time. And so I have JJ District, which houses a salon and a brick and mortar boutique. Since COVID, we had to close both of them down. We recently, on May 1st, opened up the salon with third capacity. And with that, we've gotten PPP, a little help with that for my employees. Hallelujah. Praise the Lord on that one. And I'm still, I'm still running at third capacity. So my chances of making it, they're kind of iffy. They're very iffy. And I know I have the PPP that's helping me out, but after that time, I may have to, I don't know if I'm gonna have to pay back the government, the money that I got for PPP or not. So I'm actually holding on to that money just in case. And my boutique, I had to close down. I lost too much money, way too much money. And it makes me sad. But we we have to move forward and we have to be innovative. And I'm doing my best to be innovative. I have a brick and mortar salon or boutique that I'm closing. I do have a live that is definitely helping out. It's helping to pay bills. I've worked towards trying something else to make it work in the interim. I would love to bring my, my brick and mortar business back. I would. We're about, sorry, guys. We're about community and connection and taking care of one another. And that's what I stand for here. And I've worked my ass off literally every day, busted it to, just to pay the bills and make this work. It's a dream of mine. I'm a single mom and I'm a Bizzetti. So I don't know if you guys know any of us, but we are, we're headstrong. And we're gonna keep, I'm gonna be busting through it and keep working through it. So in all of, all this, my suggestion is people who own small businesses or don't want to take another loan out from somebody else. I have enough loans to pay. I have enough debt to pay off. And that a grant would be amazing and would support a lot of our small businesses. I know a lot of them. I'm just down the street from Timoth Beer Works. And all those people, all the people on this block here. And it's, it's challenging for all of us. And I talked to Val yesterday and I said, so how you do? I mean, she says, I never worked so hard in my life, Danny. I work all the time. And I just, and we do because we don't, we can't afford to hire anybody to help us out. So we're having to do everything. And I am, I'm cutting hair. I had an employee who decided he wasn't coming back. So I had a guy who refused to come back to work. So I'm cutting hair. I'm running this live boutique and really working hard to make it work. So I came on today to share, God knows, I'm not the only one, okay? Everybody is, is having hardships and things going bad during this time. So I am resilient. I will keep moving forward as best as I can. And if it comes to the point where I have to close them down, I will find something else to do. I will make something else work. And so for me, the relief program would be very gracious and kind. And I'm a very responsible human being and I know I jumped into this and I will make it work however I can. And if you guys are able to support me and support all of our businesses, I know we'd be so grateful and thankful and blessed.
Danny, thanks a lot. And by the way, I do know your parents and they're very nice.
Thank you.
All right, can we continue, Brian?
And I will go say goodbye now. Take care. I appreciate all of your time. And congratulations, Mark.
Thank you.
Congratulations on being our mayor. Looking forward to working with you.
Yes, thank you.
Take care now. Thank you.
Mayor, I'll start with the rest, with the first.
Go ahead, Matt.
Thanks. First one is from Christina and Corey Kozicek, owners of the Studio 68 Fitness. Dear Town Council Members, due to COVID-19, just like almost every small business, Studio 68 was required to close its doors on March 16th by Governor Polis. Unfortunately, due to the nature of our business, we do not have a set time period for reopening and have been guaranteed that when we are allowed to reopen, it will be a slow transition period before we are back to normal operation. This pandemic with the closures and guidelines imposed has made it so that our revenue stream is essentially zero. We did not, we did apply for, and have received a PPP loan. However, it does not cover negotiable items like our mortgages, equipment loans, advertising, utilities, et cetera. Without assistance, we will likely be closed at the end of the summer. We are current on all of our debt with the exception of our property taxes. Without dues, we cannot pay our property taxes. And I will also add that we are also, are not providing tax income to the town as long as our business remains closed. We would be happy to work with the town to help facilitate a mutually beneficial arrangement. Any grants or low interest loans the town would be willing to provide would be greatly appreciated. Thank you in advance for your time and consideration. We look forward to hearing from you soon. Form us regards, Christina and Corey Kozicek, owners of Studio 68 Fitness.
The next email is from Michelle LaBurger. Hello, Mayor Mark and Town of Timnith members. My name is Michelle LaBurger and I live in Timnith Ranch. We would like to have golf carts, LSEV, all the current safety features and a licensed driver to be used in Timnith Ranch. Timnith Ranch homeowners already have golf carts, but we would like to use them legally. We use them to run to the pool, the school, or to pick up our kids, our children at our friend's house. They are an earth-friendly option for us and we feel that we don't need a golf course to enjoy them. Another item I would like to address is the electric 12-volt electric children's toy. Why are these against the law to use in Timnith Ranch? Why do we have police stopping children on an electric toy and telling them and their parents that the electric toy cannot be used anywhere but on the homeowner's driveway? It's absolutely ridiculous that our police officers have to waste their valuable time addressing toys. This needs to be changed. Thank you for your time.
The next one is from Stephanie Wallen at 7117 Cottage Court. To whom it may concern, I would like to address the law toward electric ride on, ride on toys for children in golf carts. I find it absurd and unfortunate that children aren't allowed to have electric scooters, electric big wheels for the smaller children, et cetera, especially when the very heart of Timnith Ranch are families with children, also golf carts. We moved here from another community that allowed golf carts and we aren't on a golf course. And we weren't on a golf course. I would love for you to consider the option for golf carts. I personally don't have one, but I find nothing wrong with them. Thank you, Stephanie Wayland.
The next email is to the mayor, to Timnith Mayor and Town Council. My name is John Barkley. My address is 6090 Prior Road, Timnith, Colorado 80547. My telephone number is 9516405183. And I'm available to answer any questions before, during, or after the meeting on this matter. In your meeting discussion, please consider the following points. One, I take issue with the proposed term that the grants will be given out on a first come, first served basis. I do not think that it would be fair to businesses that either do not have the administrative savvy to apply and to those who may not be in the information loop. I think a more fair method would be to set qualifications and a grant formula. And then if there's not enough money to meet all applications, then the grants be issued on a prorated basis. Number two, I am still not convinced that government use tax dollars subsidize for-profit businesses is a good policy. And due to the unusual nature of this action, I would like Timnith residents to have a direct say of this plan. And three, and lastly, we have the Timnith Foundation. Would a program such as this fall within their purpose? And what current and future resources does this organization have? And can any of their budget be redirected to this cause? Sincerely, John S. Barkley.
Next comment is from Julie Warren. No address given. To whom it may concern, I am a resident of Timnith Ranch North and would like to change the law that does not allow the use of golf carts and electric toys such as electric scooters, electric four-wheelers, electric bikes, et cetera, on the streets of Timnith Ranch North and all of the Timnith residential streets. Using these electric toys should not be prohibited as they are useful and safe and restricting them is very unnecessary and excessive. Thank you, Julie Warren.
The next email is from Megan Colet. Hello, I would like to request discussion of the current law forbidding the use of golf carts and electric toys throughout Timnith Ranch. The law allows for these items in Harmony Club, also in the town of Timnith, with the only obvious difference being that Harmony Club has a golf course. Golf carts and electric toy vehicles provide an environmentally friendly way to travel throughout our community. And I would appreciate review of this law. Thanks, Megan Colet.
The next comment is from Megan Bars with Fine and Funky. To whom it may concern, I have had a business in Timnith for 14 years. I started when there was dirt parking and no subdivisions with a hope and dream of having a destination shop. I believe all towns deserve a local community, which often local shops and restaurants offer. I am lucky and worked hard to make it through the last recession, adapt to the dot-com industry and survive the many ebbs and flows that retail endures and have watched many businesses come and go. I have a healthy business due to the commitment of many wonderful women. That being said, when all of the COVID reality started, I was one, I was of the mindset that businesses that deserve to be weeded out would and that the strong would survive. I humbly rescind that opinion. As what we all believe would start out as a few-week hiatus has turned into a multi-month closure, there are many healthy businesses that will survive on the roll of a dice. Please do not assume that businesses can survive this climate forever. Not all businesses are hobby businesses where they are supported by another income, nor all businesses those where the people running them are their highest overhead. I have chosen over the years to not become an online boutique. We have adapted. It does not replace the income of a steady clientele through the door, nor does the new norm where not everyone feels, even feels safe encouraging, safe encourage people to support small businesses. I am making my next moves as a business owner and I hope they are clever enough to survive the coming season that COVID is bringing. In April, we were down 89.88% of sales. Since the business mandates have started to allow for reopening, we have only served 25% of our typical store traffic. After watching in-store, after watching in-store and getting feedback both in person and online, my guess that being down 75% in-store traffic is going to be the new norm in a community where we have been told we are safer at home. Timnith has been fortunate to have Costco and Walmart, two powerful businesses deemed essential during the stay-at-home time. These were allowed to serve the community. While many people relied on these businesses for essential items, they were also allowed to sell novelty discretionary luxury items when rest of Timnith and small businesses weren't even allowed to be open. Small businesses of Timnith who helped to shape and who have given back to the community deserve your time, energy, and support moving forward. It's time for the council of Timnith to decide if Timnith wants to merely be a bedroom community to Fort Collins or if it would like to stand on its own and offer its residents a unique experience and lifestyle that depends on small independently owned businesses. I hope that our future as a community of chain independent businesses is bright. Megan Bars, Fine and Funky.
The next email is from Lori Frost Moore. It has come to my attention that the Town Council may discuss golf carts and electric child ride-on cars. I would support a change in the law to allow such items. I believe there could be safety precautions or rules in place that would allow the operation of such quote-unquote vehicles. I reside in Timnith Ranch and would support a change. Thank you. Have a great day. Lori Frost Moore.
The next email is from Valerie Miller, General Manager, Timnith Beer Works. Good morning. After reviewing the Town of Timnith Council Meeting Packet, I would like to go on record in support of the business relief program. It is important that the council and then staff recognize that the effects of COVID on local businesses will likely extend beyond any available government funding. For Timnith Beer Works reopening at partial capacity, especially if delivery options are removed or reduced, will certainly affect our bottom line. Supporting local businesses is a win-win. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Val Miller, General Manager, Timnith Beer Works.
And I believe this is the final email. It is from William M. Jenkins, Ph.D., Dear Town Council, Town Manager and Town Attorney. I wish to make a public comment on the record for the Town Council Meeting of 12 May 2020. I believe that our mayor, Mark Sukup, has a conflict of interest regarding the check register items relative to the services of TST Incorporated, totaling over $150,000. According to the Timnith Town Charter, Section 2.9, Conflict of Interest, neither the mayor nor any member of the council shall vote or participate in discussion or deliberation on any question in which he or she has a substantial personal or financial interest, direct or indirect, including an interest held through a spouse or family member. My understanding is that Sukup and Associates, along with Mark Sukup, has for many years performed tax services filings on behalf of TST Incorporated. While Mark is no longer a partner or has ownership in Sukup and Associates, his son Dan Sukup is a shareholder in Sukup, Bush and Associates, and they continue to provide services for TST Incorporated. I believe that the financial relationship between Sukup, Bush and Associates and TST, Inc. and the immediate family relationship between Mark and Dan constitutes a conflict of interest, according to the Town Charter. Given the conflict of interest, I believe Mayor Mark Sukup should recuse himself from approving the consent agenda check register items related to TST Incorporated. In the future, I do hope that Mayor Sukup is proactive in identifying any potential conflicts of interest so they may be appropriately vetted. Sincerely, William M. Jenkins, Ph.D., 5507, Shorefield Court.
Well, thanks, everybody that did respond. We appreciate it. It was some excellent comments. So next item on the agenda, after being corrected by Rick, thank you, is the consent agenda. And I will recuse myself from the vote here. Melissa, will you take a?
Yeah, let me make a motion, Mark, to accept the consent agenda.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay. Go ahead, Melissa.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Rick Collins.
Yes.
Councilmember Erin Pearson.
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Lake.
Yes.
Councilmember Brett Hanson.
Yes.
Mayor Mark Sukup.
Recuse myself. Okay, first off, we've got a huge agenda as far as a lot of different items. I'd like to first off, thank and congratulate the staff. The unbelievable staff, Wes, and all the people that are involved there. And so I spend a second just thanking them for their great efforts and stuff and putting this together. The second thing is, if you look at the agenda, I am really excited about it because it focuses on the items that we were hoping as an administration to go through, all of us. It focuses on town involvement and, and we just heard a lot of town involvement here with the letters and public comment. It focuses on transparency and making the town decisions more accessible to the residents. And it sets up better communication with the committees that we are going to discuss and move forward. So I'm really excited about it. So we are now in the mayor and council reports. That's my report. Any other council members have a report they'd like to give?
Yeah, this is Rick.
Okay.
And I'll be really brief. As far as with the COVID in the county, the county this week announced that they're going to form a group to start looking at recovery. They've hired a recovery manager. This is the same person that has worked on floods and other disasters in this area. And she's putting together a program to deal with from, all the way from home services, social services, funding, a lot of the things that was talked about in the letters earlier. So that might be something that we end up participating in. I'll get with Wes and seeing if we can be a part of that.
Awesome.
That's all I have.
Okay, Councilman Pearson?
Yes, so I've been on the No Co Strong Committee, No Co Strong for Business. It's a group, just to fill you guys in, it's a group of elected officials and town staff for all the local municipalities here in northern Colorado. And looking at what they've done for their communities and their small businesses. That's, that's sort of the goal is to, to help foster the small businesses. Mayor Sukup asked me to be on that and I've, I've done so for the last four weeks. You may have seen the article in Biz West, which I forwarded as part of this package, showing what the other communities have done. I don't think I need to go into big detail there, but if you have interest, you can look at that. There is an active link in that, in that report, in my written report. But seeing that most of the other communities, in fact, all of them have done something for their small businesses, I felt it was, I should bring this up to the council. So I drafted up, it just sort of initial ideas. By no means is this a finalized document. I think I was clear with that, that it was just some suggestions about what we could do. I've talked to Councilman Hanson to, to get his help too, and his input. I've talked to Councilman Lake as well and to get some ideas on how we could get something together. So what I'm asking for today, based on this, is that we get a head nod from the council to give staff direction to bring back at the next meeting the framework of a small business relief fund. I'm proposing an amount of $50,000, which I think for our town would, would show that we, what we're doing for our small businesses. And I'd be happy to go more in-depth with what I've already given you initially and then the follow-up on there. Or if, if people are in agreement, we can move forward. Mayor Sukup, what, what, what do you think? Would you like me just to give you a brief overview of what I've written in my report?
Well, let's, you did a great job first off, Erin, Councilman Pearson. You did a great job there and I appreciate all the, I know, hard work you put in. Let's, let's just open it up to the rest of the council and hear comments or thoughts on it.
Okay, that would be great.
Anybody?
Yeah, I'd like to weigh in and I think, again, Erin, you did a good job. Great job.
Thank you.
The biggest concern I have is to make sure that we have safeguards in place to make sure that we don't end up with so many businesses coming forward. I think you've tried to tie that down by saying you gotta be in a commercial area. We also have a lot of home businesses, especially in your neighborhood. From daycares to preschools. We also have the church down the way and I know in the federal plan, churches went ahead and applied for those monies as well. So the home businesses, the churches, even in Bear Works, the second half of Bear Works has all those people that have art projects on consignment. Would they be eligible? So it's just trying to tie down to make sure we know how many people are in this pool. I think John Barkley raised a good issue when he said, maybe if your pool's at 50,000, we have an adequate amount of time to have everybody that wants to provide an application, get those in and then figure out what can be done from that point forward. The other one is, and I'll ask, and I, it's, I don't know, and maybe Wes will be able to provide this to us. How much money is in the foundation? I know that Mayor Jill had talked about during the campaign, the possibility of using funds out of the foundation for unforeseen things like this. So maybe we should get a budget sheet that'll show us how much money's in the foundation, what that money's being spent for and those kinds of things. Then the third or the fourth thing is, our governor's gonna meet tomorrow with the President of the United States. And at this point, I know Colorado had a ton of money come in and that's going out to the counties at some level. There's gonna be a second round of this thing. We should try to piggyback and use, along with what Erin's provided, our resources to try to make sure we're in line to help draw in some funds if those are available as well. And we might have a step up on that if we say to the other communities, we're gonna put in 50,000. We'd like you to match that, the state of Colorado, through the federal government or the county kind of deal. And that would help a lot, I think, especially with Bizzetti's business and some of these others. So that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Mayor, I have just a couple of comments. I do think that Mr. Barkley's email did cover a couple of good points. I think it would be great to have some kind of community involvement in deciding exactly how that gets split up. I do like the idea of having a, some kind of an application deadline so that everyone does get that fair chance of, of applying for the funds. And I think if we could get like a group together to kind of review them, look at them, probably have some representation from council on there as well as some community members, I think would be good just to, in case there is a request, like Councilmember Collins mentioned, if there is the request for over, whatever amount we decide on, whether it's the 50,000 or, or some other number. But if there's a request for over that amount, I do think it would be good to have some kind of, whether it's a formula. But if there's a request for over that amount, I do think it would be good to have some kind of, whether it's a formula. Or just some way to kind of determine, do we limit the number of businesses that get it, or do we just lower the amount per business or? So I think some of those details could be ironed out. But I think overall, I think that it's a great idea, and I know part of the purpose of having you on. On that No Co Strong was to have a very regional approach to some of this. So I think it would be good to kind of get our feet in that as well and do what we can for some of the small businesses that we have locally.
Councilmember Hanson.
So just a couple of general thoughts. So regarding trying to get community involvement. It is a matter of, I think it's a great point. It's a matter of balancing how. How timely we can be with getting these funds out. Because even if we just went straight town staff, we're looking at minimum June, I think, before we get any any funds out to anybody. Because it would be two weeks away from the next council meeting when everything would officially be drafted up. So if if we are going to push down the road of having community members on, which I do think is a good idea, then we'll need to probably look at. If we have emergency meetings or whatever around that that topic, just some throw out there. Just just so that it's done in a in an effective way and not not July, and we're still trying to look again at somebody a five thousand dollar grant. And then just generally fill us off, play the way I've kind of looked at this as as Councilmember Pearson's been talking to me and. You know, with the with the general economic situations, it's it's a situation where the the struggles people are facing is not. It's not due to broader economic circumstances. It's due to government actions shutting people down. And when the government has chosen to to step in and interfere at people's business, I think it's reasonable that government steps in to to help a little bit. And we're we're fortunate with the the economic situation, our town, the sources of our, the major sources of our tax revenue. That it makes sense for us to to give a small amount of money, something that's at least. Would help those businesses that are on the edge. I'm not looking to, you know, bail out businesses that have been struggling to get by or or just are not viable. But it'd be a small amount of money that would be able to help those businesses that are on the edge and just need a little bit extra from the other programs that they're getting. So just to kind of put those thoughts out there for anybody that does have questions about why we're we're looking at this program. That's that's how I've analyzed, and it is a as a local program. These are businesses that. The council members are familiar with, that the public is here is familiar with. It's not distant bureaucracies making these decisions. It's 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 all people that we know and our neighbors with. So those are just my general thoughts.
So I'm going to try to pull together all those thoughts, great thoughts. I'm on it. Because I say, I I think we've got some work to do somehow to to do this right. Probably the the piece we got to start with first and is. How do we get members in the community into this this committee to sit there and review it? And. My, I think this is just sort of an intent. That we wouldn't need a resolution for, but that is, we do have in the packet. A application for committees. That we could use that application for putting together this committee. Which would be, its sole purpose is a mono purpose type of thing, which is. If we had monies. What businesses should receive them and in what ratio is it? Across the board, the same number, is it percentages? Is it first come, first served? I think I think. Barkley had a good comment about the first come, first served, maybe is not the best choice, but I'm I'm going to leave that to the committee. Aaron, you were, you sort of took charge of this initially, and if you would. Be interested, I would think. If everybody agrees that you sort of head up this committee. To allocate. The funds in a certain way, sort of have a a system that you could come back and report to the council.
I would, I would be happy to do that, and I've I've been working pretty closely with Councilmember Hanson. I I would like for him to be on there with me if if he's willing to do so, to 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 bring in some people to. To get this together. I would love to see some, if you, if it's, if it's the council's. Pleasure to to be able to put some staff on this, that would be gratefully helpful because pretty much I've been doing this on on my own. And it would be helpful to have some staff to to help out so that we could actually draw up the real bones of a of a project. That we could get on to the agenda for the twenty sixth meeting. That that is what I I would love to see if if you think that is possible.
Mayor, I don't mind hopping in here. I'm certainly willing to work myself and direct appropriate staff to work with Councilman Hanson and Pearson. If that's the board's pleasure, we could put something together for the board to consider, discuss, and then potentially either amend or vote on. On the meeting of the twenty six, if that's your direction.
I'm 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 great with moving forward. And my quite, my concern is, we had so many topics, I mean, listening to everybody here, listening to the. The public opinion, I mean, there's so many good ideas and so many divergent ideas. That I don't know if if we could come together with a clean, coherent proposal. In two weeks. And it's really not two weeks, it's more like ten days, because that's when the packet goes out. So. And I'm, and and Councilman Pearson, do you make a comment to this? My experience with the people that I have seen with the PPP and that, they're okay for two months. So that takes you to April and May, towards the end of May. If we can get the money to them June. It's within a week or two of when they run out of PPP money first. And secondly, we'll have then. Almost a month to take a look and see what kind of monies that Laramie County is willing to come up with. And the state is willing to come up with on helping these businesses. And maybe we could get a match or something to help this and give us the time to sort of get it together. I would. Hey, Wes, does? Does putting people on this committee require a vote of the council? Or or can, you know, councilmembers, Pearson and Hanson. Take the applications and they appoint people on the committee or what what are we allowed to do?
Well, I mean.
Or what should we do? Let's go there. That's that's a better question. Sorry.
I think if we're going to involve people from the. From the community, we ought to mirror it and what we're doing with the committees that you guys are already working on, the finance committee, the Parks Trails Advisory Committee. And the Metro District Ad Hoc Committee. So if we're really going to make a committee out of this. You know, I would advise and encourage that we be consistent in that manner. The issue that we have here, unlike some of the other issues, is that we really do have a have a time constraint. As you mentioned, Mayor, you're correct. The PPP money was set to be about, I think, an eight week program, and and you probably know better than I do. So that's going to expire end of May, first part of June. And while we're not the only solution, if we're going to be a part of the solution and be relevant, we probably need to be thinking about trying to get those funds out the door sometime in June, I would expect. So. Yeah, so if we're going to add some formality about it. My thought is that we be consistent with how we're how we're managing our other committees. If you just want to have us kind of vet it and bring it forward and have the whole council vote on those, that's also another option, and and we could, and we could do it that way too as well.
Councilman Collins.
Yeah, here's a suggestion I'm just throwing out there. There's five people on the council. If each one of us recommends a representative from the community, so for instance, if I wanted to represent. Our Joe, John Barkley's name out there. We get people involved right away. We don't have to go through an application process. And we try to have just Brett and Aaron. With Aaron chairing it, and we get five others representing somebody from each one of the councilmen. Then you've got under ten people, they can possibly meet then if they wanted to and space out in the conference room there and try to hash this thing out. We don't have time, we don't have the luxury, as you indicated, Mr. Mayor, to to sit back and and wait. And the details, I think, we're working with Wes and staff. We can get it worked out just by doing it as an ad hoc committee, and we're going to try to pull in people from the community. We maybe pull in one or two of the business owners as well. So we get that kind of feedback, but you can keep it under ten people then and get moving on the thing.
Wes. I'll be right at you, councilperson. Like, Wes, could you respond to Rick's thoughts?
Yeah, no, that that certainly is one way to go about it. One of the things I will tell you is, this is my own. I'm going to say this, my own personal bias, the larger the group gets, sometimes actually becomes even more complicated than not. So just balancing, you know, between having staff on there, having some counsel on there and having. Other representatives, the bigger it gets, I'm not sure that actually streamlines the thoughts. In some ways, it can actually make it a little more. A little more cumbersome, but to that extent, we'll we'll make it work. If that's the council's purview, we'll we'll somehow figure a way through it.
So if I if I understood Councilman Collins correctly, he's suggesting a seven member. Committee, are you you suggesting that's too many?
If you.
That's not counting staff.
Right, right, correct, right.
Well, one one more staff, some eight.
And and I'll, I can jump in on this one. I I think that to Councilmember Collins' point. Having some. Inputs from the entire council through designated representatives makes sense, but I I'm not sure that Councilmember Hanson and Pearson would need to have. A designate if they're already personally participating in the group. So maybe it's just, maybe it's just Councilmember Collins and Councilmember Lake and and Mayor Sukup, or I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Collins, Mayor Sukup and Councilmember Lake. Each put a designate into the group and then and then Counselor Hanson and Counselor Pearson participate. And then Wesley, I think, he's already got a charge under the the emergency declaration extension to coordinate. Both internally and with with other jurisdictions on aid. So I think you've already got all the authorization he needs to check on on matching grant from county or from the state. So I think you could you could charge this group with moving moving forward pretty quickly. Maybe approve a a final resolution at your next meeting, but but already be off and running on some of the coordinating work and the administrative work between now and that meeting.
Okay, what do you think of that, councilperson? Wait, I'm sorry, Councilperson Lake, did you, you had a comment?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I don't know that I would even have a person in mind for myself to like appoint. I would much rather see who would be interested for myself. I was going to also suggest, do we want to, right now, knowing what our calendar looks like. Automatically put on some kind of extra meeting that we can all get on here for, whether it's five, ten minutes or whatever that takes. Otherwise, I mean, honestly, I have no idea who I would appoint or even who would be. You know, I would much rather see from the community who is interested, rather than me going to one of my friends and being like, hey, I think you'd be good for this or or something like that. It's just my own personal take on it.
What, okay, so think, I'm going to just sort of try to gather up thoughts. So what if we we ask people to send in the application? It's there this time, we put it up on our website, we give them one week. Then we would have people that were interested in one week. Hopefully between that that time, so that would be today's, the twelve, so that gets to the nineteenth. Hopefully between the nineteenth and the twenty sixth. We could have one or two meetings with that committee to sort of gather and ferret out the the different thoughts. They could come, they could then be maybe ready for some ideas that we could then. Direct staff to give us a resolution on June, is it ninth? Melissa, is it June ninth?
Yes.
June ninth, yes.
Yeah, June ninth, I think that still puts us, I think that puts us in the sweet spot. You guys correct me if I'm I'm incorrect, but I think that puts us in the sweet spot of everyone's out of their PPP money by then. We'll have known what Laramie County is going to do, we'll know what the state's going to do. And we can then be most effective with our our grants. I'm asking.
I understand where you're where you're coming from there.
So you're looking at a.
Go ahead, Ms. Councilman Hanson. Oh, I.
I just following that timeline, awarding grants on the ninth.
So on the ninth, we approved the resolution. On the tenth, I would guess. The the committee works been in such a spot that they're ready to award them, because we don't. Wes, we don't have to, or or Robert, either one of you, we don't have to approve as a council the grant who they go to. We just need to approve the process, isn't that correct?
That's right.
Okay.
Okay, so we'd be ready that right after that first meeting.
But but the way I understand it, in that timeline, we're taking applications for the people to be on the committee. And then and then we're we're approving the committee on the ninth, and then that's when we can start applications from our from the community.
Right, I'm sorry to interrupt. No, so we'll, so let's just go through timeline that I'm thinking, and you guys correct me. So it's May twelfth today. We get the final applications in so we can make a decision on May nineteenth. On who's on the committee. Then between May nineteenth and May twenty fourth. You come up with, your committee comes up with some suggestions. It isn't totally cohesive yet, but it's ferrets out. Some of these questions have been posed by the public comments and and the councilpersons here. Then, and then we give guidance as a council at that point. You then, with your committee, prepare up a resolution with staff to bring on June ninth. Which we then approve the formula and what's there, and June tenth, you're prepared to issue the grants.
But we need to have time to have the businesses submit an application with the information that we're requesting.
Correct.
Do that until we have a committee that comes with the criteria for what they need to submit so that the committee can can look at what they're talking about. So if we're not, if we're not putting the committee in place until June ninth, we can't start that process until after June ninth. And then there would be time for the committee to look at the applications and then and then dole out the money, which would be, you know, I'm guessing. Late June.
I thought.
Where can I, and I mean, alternatively, in my in my second page of proposal that 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 I sent over with additional information. If we and more of an in-house staff with two council members, the town manager, perhaps the finance director. Or another couple of staff members, whether that's somebody on the communication team or or Brian Williamson, for me, comes to mind. As a level-headed person that we could have on the staff that's outside of the process, then we would already have our committee in place. We could get the information, there's so much information out there that other communities have already done. All their stuff has been published for weeks on theirs, and I think we could easily draw off of their information. There's no need to reinvent the wheel when there's five or six programs that we could look at. We could pick what we feel is the best as a committee to put this together, and we could have this in front of you on the twenty sixth. For what the criteria are, and then open it up for applications to the community, and then truly be be giving the the grant funds out on the ninth. Of June.
Oh, Councilman Pearson, so there is, and I forget if it was councilperson Hanson or Lake. That wanted community involvement with this. So are you comfortable with Councilman Pearson's suggestion? that wanted community involvement with this. So are you comfortable with Councilman Pearson's suggestion or not?
Um, I mean, so could we, so if I understand correctly, we tried to establish the criteria with, with, with a staff and council-based committee, but maybe we try and get a couple residents on when we're actually awarding the grants, or we just, just stick with a council and staff-based?
I think, I think the latter is what councilperson Pearson suggested, but correct me if I'm wrong, Councilman Pearson.
No, no, I think that's what I was thinking, and it's not that I'm not trying to get the community involved in this, but just for the sake of time, looking through the timeline, we're, we're putting things out almost six weeks in the other timeframe. And compared to the other communities that are already giving grant money and have granted money and looking at their programs, it's usually an internal group that's doing this as opposed to putting it out into the community, vetting the applications. I've been on the, the process committee for the, for the planning commission for many years, and it, it's a lengthy process. It just doesn't happen over a, a short timeframe. So I'm not at all trying to be less than transparent to have a community member there. I just think we're already sort of late to the game here and to get things rolling in a, even just a one-month timeframe, this, this would be the way to get it done.
Yes, Councilman Collins.
Yeah, Aaron, maybe you or Wes, do we have a way as a town to identify these businesses ourselves? So we can jumpstart this thing even faster, and if we can identify them, then why can't we be sending them a note saying that this program's in the working stages? Would you be interested in participating if it's so put in it? How many, how many businesses are we talking about?
It depends on our criteria. If you, up to what you had mentioned before with all home-based businesses, well, most of those aren't in a commercial zone, but that's all.
That's what I mean. You had it, so they were sort of out.
If you were, if you were looking at ones that are in a commercial zone, you know, smaller, smaller businesses that we're looking at, we're probably looking at 10 to 12 businesses. A lot, most of the communities out there have, have put this on, looking at a list of businesses that have a, a sales tax business license as opposed to just a regular business license in town. And if we are looking at that list, it's, it's not very long. I'd be, I'd be happy to send you the list that I have. Actually, it may have gone out, but if not, I'd be happy to resend it to you.
And that might be the best way to jumpstart this thing.
Yeah, then we're only looking at, you know, a dozen businesses that meet that, that strict criteria of not the, the national chains, obviously. And when you're looking at people that would be significantly impacted by this and in a commercial zone and have a business sales tax license, we're only looking at about a dozen businesses.
Yeah.
So I, I'll repeat the question. Are we comfortable with staff and council on the committee, or do we want outside people, councilpersons, Hanson and Lake?
I, I'm fine with staff and council, especially with that, with the time limit and trying to, to meet it in an adequate timeframe, I think. I'm fine with that.
Councilman Hanson?
Um, in the end, I mean, yeah, I think we're, we do need to, if we want this program to be effective, we do wanna do it in a, in a timely manner. And so in the end, yes, it's not my favorite option, but I, but I'm okay with a council and staff-based committee. And, and something I have talked about with Councilwoman Pearson is being very proactive with the transparency, essentially. We, we would publish the list of, of who receives the grants and we would make sure the community knows exactly where this money went.
Wes, who would you suggest being on the committee then from staff?
I would, let me take the lead on that, Mayor, if you don't mind. And to Councilwoman Hanson's point, I would recommend, if you go this route then, that you charge the town manager as a part of this, reporting back to the council, the full council, and report what all businesses applied and what all businesses were in fact granted monies and how much those, how much those monies were. So I think we, in an effort to be transparent, as you mentioned, Councilman Hanson, is that at the end of the day, we owe it not only to ourselves, we owe it to the community to step up and say, here's the closed loop, here all's who, you know, here was the criteria, here who's applied and who's, here's the list that got the, the funds, and we can certainly make that a, a report back to the, back to the council.
So, so here's my understanding. This committee will be composed of staff and councilpersons Hanson and Pearson, that they will prepare up a criteria to use for selecting the group, which we will then vote on on May 24th. And on June 9th, we will vote on the, their final decisions on who gets the money. Is that what you guys are saying?
I think that if we were, were to have that, depending on how it's structured on the 26th, the, the next meeting, we could either go with, with the whole approval of what the committee decides for the grant, for the grant, you know, where the grant money goes, and then we have that in a staff report. Or if we decide on the 26th that we want to bring it back to council for an action, which I think is also, you know, it could be either way. That would be fine too. And then, then we would have put out the criteria for one week, the 26th meeting, to take applications from the businesses. We could look at their, look at what they submit in that next week, and then by the, yes, by the 9th, we have those chosen. And if it's desired by the council to have that voted on, we could bring it then, or we could do it as the committee, whichever is, is decided on there. Yes. So, yes, either way, I, I think that that's what we're looking at, where the relief would come to those businesses on or, or right, right near June 9th.
Robert, since this is not a budget item, isn't it something that the council would have to vote on?
Uh, I'd have to look at, you know, and Christine's in the meeting and, and probably has a better, better sense for whether there's another related line item that, that has been approved within the budget already. I, I think there may be an area that, that she could find, but assuming that there's not, then yes, the council would need to vote on this.
Well, in fact, Christine just showed up.
Hi, Christine. I wanted to make sure, Mayor, I understood your question though. Are you talking about the authorization to spend $50,000? Or where are we gonna find it within the adopted budget? Because, Robert, I hear you asking.
Not, not the latter, the former. Do we have the authority to pass 50,000 and then since it's to individual businesses, do we vote on the aggregate, seeing it just like we do the check register? Do we vote on the aggregate of the companies that get it?
Being within the town's purchasing policy that was adopted by council, the council would have the ability to go ahead and approve 50,000 for the committee to disperse to the respective businesses, and the council could leave that at the discretion of the committee.
Okay.
So it's really up to the, the council. If you feel strongly that as a collective council, you should be making the final decision, then, then certainly you can handle it that way as well. But I do think you have that ability and authorization just to go ahead and approve the total amount that the committee could go ahead and distribute.
Up to.
Up to, that's right.
That's right.
So, quick question to everybody, sort of give me a head nod. I'm gonna make a statement just to keep things moving. Do you want to vote on the individual grants to the company, or do you want to vote on the formula and leave it to the committee to assign the grants? So, question is, do you want to leave it to the committee to assign the grants? Yes or no?
Yes. I, I think, I think having the council come in and specify which companies they like is, yeah.
Councilperson Lake, I didn't see your head move.
I don't have a strong opinion either way, so whatever is easier for that one.
Okay. Wes, I asked you earlier, and I don't know if you didn't want to answer it or not, but do you have suggestions on who you're going to put on the committee with Councilpersons Pearson and Hanson?
Uh, yeah, so myself, Christine at a minimum, and then I probably would have maybe have some administrative help. So that's gonna be either Melissa or Susan or someone like that to help me.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll keep it as small as I can, but I need it as effective as I can.
So since this is just a direction to staff, I don't think we need a resolution or anything, correct?
Not for this evening. I think we have your direction and I'll work with Councilman Hanson and Councilman Pearson. We'll come up with some, some appropriate documentation and recommendations for the meeting on the 26th, and we'll have that for your consideration then.
Awesome. Great discussion, everybody.
I just want to thank councilmembers Hanson and Lake, Mayor Pro Tem Collins, and thank you, Mayor, for, for allowing this to move forward. I, I really appreciate it. I know our business as well as well.
Thanks. Chief Jones, are you ready?
I am, Mayor. Good evening.
Good evening.
You had asked for an update on fireworks or fireworks ordinance and asked me to do a little bit of research, which I was able to get done in the last couple of weeks. Under Article 6, we have a definitive ordinance that pertains to fireworks under 7.6.10. And what our ordinance does, it defines fireworks, it indicates what's not permissible, and then our ordinance indicates not what really is approved, but what doesn't qualify for a firework. So I'll briefly go through our ordinance and then let you know what I find out, found out about the other surrounding jurisdictions. Our, our prohibited fireworks are described as an item that's, the primary purpose is to produce an auditory sensation or by combustion. Toy cannons, toy canes, blank cartridges, the types of balloon that requires a fire from underneath to propel the balloon, firecrackers, torpedoes, skyrockets, rockets, roman candles, dayglow bombs, cigarette loads or torches, fireworks containing any explosive or flammable compound. And that's kind of a, a catchphrase there. That, that covers a lot of items. Fireworks include any lighted material that leaves the ground. So our ordinance, this is what it permits, which is, I, I found a bit intriguing. It allows toy caps, it allows highway flares, railway fuses, yep, distress signals, smoke candles, or other emergency signal devices. So essentially, we eliminate a lot of items that would be considered fireworks. Now, I looked at state law. State law definitively says, anything that leaves the ground is not permitted. M80s, cherry bombs, things that explode. But what the state allows is fountains, toy caps, snakes or glow worms, ground spinners, sparklers, toy propellants, illuminating torches, noise makers that crackle and whistle, and certain tube devices. And quite honestly, I have no idea what, what a tube device is, but okay, we'll, we'll run with it. So I checked with Fort Collins, Severance, Loveland, Windsor, Johnstown, Frederick and Firestone. Fort Collins has an absolute prohibition against all fireworks. Severance's ordinance essentially mirrors ours, as does Windsor's, but Windsor says that their folks can have sparklers. The folks that follow state law are Loveland, Windsor for the most part, Johnstown, Frederick and Firestone. So i-if you see, there, there's probably some wiggle room in, in our ordinance for, you know, an adept person to, to say, this is not a firework, therefore it's permissible. But we're very, very restrictive.
Okay. Great. Thanks for the report. Comments?
One thing I've been discussing with some of the town staff, and, and I'd like to get people's thoughts on this before making an official motion, is essentially allowing the use of home fireworks, mirroring state law, but maintaining our prohibitions on the sale of fireworks, just because I don't think regulating that is something we're prepared to do in the timeframe, and there's a lot of implications there that, that I don't think we got the chance to think through, but I think we can trust our residents with the use of fireworks in the same way that many of our surrounding jurisdictions do. Is that something that anyone else has any thoughts, comments on?
Yeah, this is...
Mayor Pro Tem Collins?
Yeah, I, I would have no problem moving towards mirror the Colorado state law. We already know that fountains and caps and snakes and sparklers, they're being used every year here anyway. I think that'd be a smart move. I don't know what certain tube devices are, so we'll have to look into that along with the fee, but the mere, the state law would be nice.
Councilperson Lake?
I agree. I feel like the state has their, their boundaries and I feel like every kid at a certain point should be able to have a sparkler.
Even the big kids.
Councilperson Pearson, you have a comment?
I agree. We could go to just, I mean, obviously, we can't go greater than the state law. I mean, less restrictive than the state law, so I'm absolutely happy if we could have sparklers here and, and whatever state law has, I'm, I'm good with that. I think it would be a good choice.
So I think we're directing Wes' staff to come back with a resolution for next meeting to mimic the state of Colorado, and obviously, I know Chief Jones will be a big part of that and help. We probably need to make sure we understand what certain tube devices are and either delete it or put it in and we know what it is. But other than that, that'd be my only guidance.
Okay, we'll, uh, we'll get with staff tomorrow and we'll get to working on that. I think it's gonna require an ordinance. I'll defer to Robert, so there'll probably be a first and second reading, but we'll get that queued up just as quick as we can in your, in your future, future agenda calendars.
Thank you. Chief Jones, we had a number of comments on golf carts and electric devices and stuff, and I know a couple of them talked to you prior to this meeting, and why don't you give us your thoughts?
Well, thanks, Mayor and members of council. We have had a number of inquiries regarding golf carts in our town on both sides of Harmony, whether it be a golf course or a community center that has a pool. Certainly there are folks and individuals that have golf carts that would like to use them. The, it's, it's not as simple as just indicating golf carts, because there's a number of regulations that are exist, in existence, one of them being state law that has some rather definitive parameters on when a golf cart can be used on a public right-of-way. And, and of course, virtually all the streets in Timneth are public right-aways as opposed to private roadways, which another community could probably get away with golf carts and set their own different resolutions without considering state law. But one of the things I spoke to one of our residents about was it's just not as simple as golf carts, as was mentioned in the public to be heard. You've got power wheels that kids operate, you've got electric skateboards, you've got singular wheel skateboards, you have electric minibikes, electric go-karts. Then you end up with a determination on what, what the state allows as far as, it's called a low-energy electric vehicle, but some golf carts aren't electric, they are gasoline-powered. When you depress the accelerator, they spontaneously start a motor. And, and those probably don't qualify under the state law. I am confident in saying, and you'll find this helpful, Mayor, we've been working on this with Robert Rogers and his office to help define what the parameters would be for golf carts. We're working on it diligently. We just are hopeful we can get something in place before the warmer weather really hits us and provide the community with an understanding of what's acceptable and what isn't. One of, one of the ancillary things that I think council and the legal needs to be thinkful, thinking of is the, the bike paths and those kinds of things. Are those permissible for the use of golf carts, electric vehicles and that kind of thing, as well as sidewalks or the side of a roadway? So there's a number of things we can do, and one of the things we did find is that the town of Erie has a rather robust golf cart ordinance. So that's one of the examples. There are very few in Colorado that, that permit golf carts on the roadways, aside from state law mandates. And then there's licensing, insurance, a windshield, brake lights, turn signals. All of those things fall under the state parameters.
So would you, would it give you enough time to come back in the next meeting, which would be the 26th, and just give us sort of the decisions or, or thoughts? which would be the 26th and just give us sort of the decisions or, or thoughts that, that to give you guidance, not, you know, give you enough time to sit there and review it? And then give us some questions that, for guidance for you on how to proceed on with it?
Oh, sure, Mayor. I, I don't mean to commit Mr. Rogers to this endeavor, but we'll need the significant assistance of the legal parameters on how we can craft and maintain state law as it is applicable for the, for our town. But we'll, we'll give it our best shot to bring you some information forward.
Counselperson Hanson?
Uh, just, just to clarify, are we more strict than state law right now regarding golf carts?
Right now, we don't have anything on the books, so state law is applicable for us.
So we, we just follow state law and that's it?
That's correct.
Okay.
And, and Councilmember Hanson, I, I mean, the officers are very sensitive to the community. I mean, most people that have a golf cart on the roadway, if we contact them, it's generally a, hey, you're not supposed to be doing this. And oddly enough, one of the individuals that I, I spoke with yesterday, he had been contacted by our officer. And she mentioned, hey, you can't have these on the roadway. And that was the frustration level is, well, I, I have it, so when can I legally use it? And, and that's the difficulty that, that we're experiencing.
Okay. Counselperson Lake?
Um, yeah, just a clarifying question. So it sounded like you said, right now, we don't have our own specific ruling, which means that we follow state law. Is that correct? Is that kind of what you said?
That's correct. We don't have anything on the books.
So if that's the case, then technically they are legal if they're following the guidelines, which require the turn signals and brake lights and windshields and all of that. So even if we were to, to put something in there that we were to follow, you know, our own ordinance, which would probably mimic state, most of the golf carts that currently exist probably don't meet those requirements. Is that correct?
That would be my supposition is that they don't meet the state's criteria.
Okay, so it's not that people's, it's not that the golf cart itself is illegal to be on the street then right now. It, golf carts, if they meet those requirements, are able to be.
If they meet the state requirements and then Councilmember Lake, there's a caveat in there as well. They have to be licensed by the state. And the conversation I had with our resident yesterday was we, neither one of us knew how to go about that.
Okay, so I, I guess my question is, is it worth even looking into if we, if we already mimic state law? And there's no way for us to, to have a law that would be less than what the state law is? Would it, would it, does it matter if we even do that?
Well, it, it's bigger than just the golf carts. It's the, then it's the electric vehicles on the sidewalk, the power wheels, the skateboards, the, you know, the electric small bicycles kids ride. It's also golf carts and all these other items. So it's probably worth looking at.
And just to, just to jump in here, I think the state, and I'll defer to Robert's office on this, but I think the state also anticipates that local governments can, under certain conditions, provide for these kinds of vehicles to operate. So, so in a situation like this, you have state guidelines about motorized and moving vehicles, but you also, under certain conditions, also if the local government wants to, it can provide some regulations around making something permissible. That's, that's the part of the research we still have to do.
Good questions. Counselperson Lake? Does somebody else have a hand up?
Wes answered my question.
Yep, and that answered my question as well. Thank you.
Okay.
So Mayor, just to this point, so we, we can attempt to have additional information on the 26th. I think in order to provide a really compelling and comprehensive case, it, it may actually take us maybe a, an extra meeting to get something in front of you. So with your permission, I'd like to just have maybe a checkup on the 26th or some additional information or items to consider, or maybe points for direction. So kind of a one, two step here. So if it's the council's pleasure, I'll ask the chief to start putting together, cobbling together some, uh, some points of clarity or some potential recommendation or some issues we need further direction on. With a final run at this perhaps on June 9th, if that's-
That'd be great, Wes. I think everyone's nodding their head, so I think that's excellent.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. We'll head that direction.
Great. Thanks, Chief Jones. Great. Thanks. Great info.
Thank you.
Next on is Don Toronto, Resolution Number 36, Series 2020.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As everybody knows, I mean, this is the, the Three Bell Crossing project. And I think the council knows this has been going on for, for quite some time. And we're now at the construction phase. And this, this is a budgeted item and we have put the project out for bid. We had three bids and as you can see in the report that Eric put together, we have Conal Resources, which was the low bidder. What we're trying to do is get your approval to move this forward and for the town to do their portion of this project. And then as usual, we will wait for the railroad to finish theirs. Do I have any questions?
Rick, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Collins?
Yeah, I noticed that it, it looks like there's some kind of typo here. On the recommended motion, it speaks of 150,000 up to 150,000. But in the approval in their Resolution Number 36, it has funds up to 211.
Hmm, I, I don't see that.
Yeah, if you look at page 27, the summary page, it has recommended motion, funds up to 150,000. Yet in the resolution, it says funds up to 111,000. So what, which number do you need?
150. There's 211 left, 211 and 60,000 left in the, as a balance in the existing budget. We're asking for 150 of that.
Yeah, so in the resolution, we'll probably have to amend the resolution where it says 150 instead of 211.
Oh, let's do that.
Yes, yeah. When I make the motion, Mark, if you want it, whenever you want it, it's a good, good program.
Councilmembers, just real quick, the 211 is a typo on my fault from copying a previous resolution. So I apologize for that. It is a $150,000 number.
Great.
Thanks, Eric.
Not a problem.
So how, how should I do this to be-
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion if there's no other discussion.
No, I don't think so. Oh, yep, we do. Lee, uh, Counselperson Lake?
I just have one comment, and I'm not sure if, if I was looking at, there's also an image of the roundabout in there. So I, I'm not sure if that, is that supposed to be in there? Is that tied to it or is that just something separate?
It's actually, that's actually the next item.
Yeah, it's the next-
Okay, so it, it's, it's just the picture without the info before it. Okay, that was all my question. Sorry.
You bet. Any further questions?
I just have one comment. I want to thank you, Town Engineer Furman and, and Public Works Director Toronto. Thank you so much for getting this across the finish line. We have been trying, you guys have been trying for years to get this through with the railroad. And the residents of South, people of South Harmony are going to be thrilled to not have this extra stop sign to go through there and just keep traffic moving. So thank you so much for your persistence with the, with the railroad and the PUC to get this across the finish line.
Thank you, Councilman Pearson. Yeah, as you know, the, the railroad can challenge your patience and with, with most of these things. So we've, we've learned how to just continue to persevere.
I think that is an understatement.
Mayor Pro Tem Collins, do you want to make the motion?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion on Resolution Number 36. We allow for expenditure of funds up to 150,000 with the caveat that we correct the resolution itself to reflect up to 150,000 for three bells parkway.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I second that.
Okay, all those, oops, we need a roll call, don't we, Melissa?
Yes.
So go ahead.
Mayor Pro Tem Rick Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Aaron Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Lake?
Yes.
Councilmember Brett Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Mark Suker?
Yes. Okay, good job. The next item on our agenda, 7A, is the gateway project. And probably everything, this is probably the single most complaint that we get at the, at the town is the bad traffic at our gateway. And I think Public Works Director Toronto has an idea of maybe fixing it.
Okay, I'm going to assume that, that'll let me get started here.
It does.
All right, so, and as counsel, as you know, this, this has been a, an ongoing topic of conversation for longer than what, than I want to even think. And, and what we have right now is I want to take you through a little bit of, a little bit of history and then an opportunity. Uh, so what you see in front of you right now is, as you know, we have been, we herded a bunch of cats. And that, by that I mean, in this particular location, the problem that we have here is all the improvements and the, the traffic problems are on private property owned in this case by Walmart. And there are five, six other businesses that are associated with that that happen to be separate from Walmart, but are, all have the access on this private road. So we, we endeavored to try to get all those people and be the catalyst that kind of brought them all together to try to get a solution. Our solution that we had recommended to Walmart and all these people was a roundabout. And that fell on disfavor with Walmart and the rest of them, mostly because of the price tag that was between $550,000 and $680,000. And so what you're looking at is the improvements that were agreed to by all these people, which is about $170,000 of improvements, which we think would make the situation better, but is not a long-term solution. So all of the participants, save one, have agreed to the 10% component of this $170,000. So that's where we are. We've gotten everybody except one. The town had said they would pay for that additional $17,000 and along with their component of it to, just, just to make the project move forward. I reached out to the Walmart representatives and they were ready to move forward. At the same time, we did that, after having discussions with the council, I, I sat down with them and wanted to know if there were other particular options that might be looked at, that would be ones that would be a better solution. And Brian, if you'd throw up the roundabout opportunity, there you go. We had looked at several roundabout opportunities. This is the, the chosen one that most people wanted. And this is just an exhibit. And so the, the thought here and the opportunity was to talk to Walmart to see if they were interested in being maybe a, a larger partner with this and, and move this thing forward to try to get a, a project that, that actually did more. And, and the, the way we, we approached this is we, we threw out an opportunity for them to deed over the, the right of way, because they want to get rid of that in the worst way. So the opportunity we have here is to negotiate with Walmart to give us the right of way so that we now have the opportunity to control our destiny and to have that as public right of way for this improvement. What that would potentially require is the town participating at a higher level than we had conceived originally. What I'm asking for here is the, the council to allow me to, to sit down with Walmart in the very near future and try to craft an opportunity that I could bring back to you, thereby getting Walmart to, to give us a number that they would be willing to add to the pot to allow for a larger, more, let's say, robust solution to this project to be, to be constructed instead of the, the, I'll call it the mandate. Now, I'll, I'll just, I, I want to get some questions and I'm sure you have some. But, but to, to summarize this whole thing, in my mind, it's a great opportunity to solve an existing problem. One of the, the problems with this, as you can see, that's caused us the problem all along is that this is all private property and we have no jurisdiction there. If they would deed us the right of way to allow for the construction to, to happen and for us to now have authority to take care of that from now to the, to, into the future, we wouldn't be in that situation anymore. And so that's our opportunity. It's a, it's a short fuse sort of situation, which I think we're probably dealing with a lot these days. But because if this, if this is going to go and if, if it's going to be constructed in this year, which I know everybody wants to do, it has to be under construction by the early part of July and then completed by the middle to the end of October. So with that, and, and, and just to, I threw out the numbers earlier, but the cost range for this is between somewhere between $550,000 and $680,000. That's our estimate at this point. So what I'm looking for is your, your heading on to let me go discuss that with these people and come back with a, the, with a, an opportunity.
Counselperson Pearson?
I guess I'll throw out the first question that we're probably all thinking. So this five to 600,000, would we still have buy-in from these businesses for some of that?
I, yeah, that, that's a great question. I was gonna, I should have answered it before you asked it. We, the assumption we're making is we've got $170,000 pledged. And I think that we'll continue to have that pledge, which we're looking for is an additional amount for Walmart to put in there to add to that and then come up with the, an opportunity for the town to then supplement that to the tune of whatever it has to be to make the project work.
So right now, we're looking at a deficit of about four to 500,000 other than what was pledged and what Walmart has, I mean, excluding anything Walmart would bring extra to the table.
Yeah, and, and Aaron, let me put a little more finer point on that. I, I told Walmart right from the get-go that, you know, they were, they were getting off incredibly easy because by any metric that you want to divide this cost by, they would never be only paying 10% of whatever it is. That, that just would never happen. So they, they understand that the, the opportunity, the option that was on the table was, was very favorable to them. I will tell you, in discussions with these people, they are telling me that this is the only situation they have in the Western United States where they're responsible for right of way and, and, and maintenance for the, the access to property that is not just theirs. So none of these people pay, none of the rest of the businesses that is there pay for this, for the, for that entrance. And they, they would like to get rid of that.
So it, it seems to me if, if they were willing to get rid of it and wanting to pay for it, that there is an opportunity for maybe a substantial chunk of that change to get put over to, to, to be that burden to be borne by them, not us.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest to you, while I'm not trying to, to, to throw a number on the table, because I'm, I definitely trying not to do that now, because I know they're probably listening to this, this conversation.
Most likely.
But I've told them that, that if this is going to work, that number has to be six digits. So.
So we're kind of looking for your permission to go negotiate two things, or three things, to, to understand that we're looking at this range, Dots providing 550 to 680. So we understand this is what the project is most likely going to entail. We have your permission to negotiate the best deal possible for the town to have as minimal cost in those negotiations as possible. And we will then be also assuming responsibility for the right of way and we'll have much more control over what it looks like moving forward instead of sitting with kind of our handout. That's kind of the premise.
I, I think the key here is we're not committing to any money at this point. What we're, what we're doing is giving one of our contractors the authority to negotiate for the, the best price that we can get. the authority to negotiate for the the best price that we can get on this this deal. And if you guys look at the the roundabout, you can just see that the all of a sudden, it just totally frees up Murphy's and Starbucks and Chick-fil-A because they have to go out and it totally frees up Wendy's because they sort of have to go backwards and then come back in. And so you you've just totally enhanced the flow there plus if you see that little yellow strip, I would guess that we probably could add another lane exiting out in that. Is that right, Don?
That's our intent. We we want to try to get one more southbound lane. And we think we can by by the combination of of a kind of tearing into the the existing median there and maybe getting a little more property to the west, we'll we'll make it happen somehow. And like Eric and and Eric's told me from the beginning, there's there's conflicts in that that's a kind of an unconventional interse intersection and you can't see the the southern part of it. We have to make sure that the the opposing traffics on the other side all lines up. And that that'll be the 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 issue, but we believe that we can make that happen.
So any other questions to to Don? Do I have a motion?
I don't think you need a motion.
I don't need a motion. That's right. So is is everyone feel good about moving forward and seeing what we can come up with?
Yes.
Yes, yes, I I I just wanna, I mean, on private property, I I would hate to see the town sinking that kind of cash in. I want to throw that caveat in there.
Yeah, I mean, Aaron, I I think the only way that the town does anything like that if it's is if at the end of the day, it's it's right away that's ours.
Okay.
Don, thanks a lot.
We'll do that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next discussion item is Kim Newcomer. And, you know, one of the things we wanted to do is get control of our marketing costs that had been high and also get some direction. And so we asked Kim to come in and do that. And here's her discussion items.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. It's good to see everybody. I do have a quick presentation just to keep us focused, more me than anyone else. So I'm going to go ahead and pull that up. All right. So anytime we have new members join our council, it's always a good opportunity to check in and really reevaluate communication goals and intentions. And so really today is our chance to have both a big picture conversation about your intentions, goals. And also, I hate to tell you, but I have some key decisions I need you to make tonight about events particularly related to July. So we'll go through the whole presentation and then maybe circle back and we can tick off each of the items that we need to discuss tonight. First of all, I just want to talk about goals. You know, these may sound very simple, but I think communication actually is. It's the implementation that always gets a little tricky. But from conversations that I've had with each of you and with the town manager and Mayor, these really sort of rose to the top for me as your priorities around communication. Information that's timely and accurate and easy to find engagement. So we talked a lot about that tonight about how do we make sure that we're really pulling more voices into the conversation? And then this concept of transparency. So really helping people understand what happens not only at town meetings, but how are decisions made? And what are the impacts that they have? I think almost what's more notable here is what's not on this list. And you can see that we do not have the word marketing on here. I've heard a lot from all of you that there's a real intention to pull back on the marketing and really focus on our residents, focus on our community and trying to keep them informed. In addition to those big picture goals, there's also, I think, a renewed operational guidance. And this is probably throughout the entire organization, but tonight I'm just going to focus on my little communications. Really what we're trying to do through this is to decrease cost, increase efficiency and increase accountability. And I'm going to spend just the next few moments here talking about how I think we can do that. So first and foremost, and you know, the town managers really ask that Slate step up to the plate and act as the managing contractor for all events and communications expenses and output. As you guys know, we've had multiple contractors working on communications. While they're all very good, earnest people, we really haven't had a source of source of knowledge or a source of accountability. And so we are recommending that Slate steps up and takes on that accountability role. At the same time, we're looking at all of our current contracts to figure out how do we remove duplication? How do we reduce administrative expenses? So those expenses that are associated with more management and not output, we maximize the money that we spend on communications in total. So in order for us to do that, we took a look at our 2020 event budget and we took a look at our 2020 communications budget. And what I'll is that we're reducing both of those. Now, some of those reductions, particularly in events, are related to some of the cancellations and adjustments that we've had to make due to COVID. But others are really from cost savings from the the items I talked about above. And then really due to the elimination of some of those marketing expenses that we had been incurring here. So you have a more detailed budget in your packet, but I thought I would just summarize really what we're looking at from a comparison of 2020 budget to 2020 revised. And roughly, we're looking at about a $260,000 savings in the communications program alone. And again, that is partially due to some of the adjustments we've had to make through events and partially due to really just tightening our belts and being more focused with our dollars. Now, a couple of items of note in that more detailed budget. And you will see in there that it includes the the labor of live streaming council meetings. It does not include the equipment. So the discussion you'll be having with Brian later today is really around what are your expectations of what that meeting looks like? And how it's presented to the community? And that will dictate some of our equipment costs and some of the costs associated with actually producing those events. And so I just wanted to point that out. It's a bit of a placeholder for us for the the labor part, but not the equipment part. I think you'll also see that this budget, although less than years past, also includes two new things. One is a community survey. We're going to talk more about that here in a little bit. And the other is a website redesign and we'll talk about that here in a little bit as well. So speaking of which, and one of the things that I think is really important, and you guys know that Slate, we work with communities and local governments with Timnith and beyond. But one of the most important things that we can do is keep our contractors honest. And so how that process usually works with local governments is putting out every few years to make sure that we have the right contractors working on the right scope of work for the right cost. When we decide to consolidate our efforts, I thought it would be important that we RFP some responsibilities. Community survey, and I'd say that's most important more so because we certainly are not statisticians or market researchers. And so we need to bring in that outside expertise. A website redesign, community event promotion and production. And then the role that we're playing, general communications and management. Throughout the next several months, we'll be putting all of the services out for RFP welcoming bids, not only from current contractors, but others throughout Colorado and beyond. So let's tick off some of these one by one. And I want to talk quickly about the resident survey. This has always been in the budget for 2020 and certainly has not been cut in the revised budget that I shared with you today. There is in your packet an RFP for review. And really, we want to move pretty quickly on this. So if you have any input, if we missed something, if you have any concerns, I do want to hear about that tonight. And also, I really want to get that RFP out the door in May so we can make those adjusted adjustments and really start moving on this aggressive schedule. You can see in June, we'll be bringing back to you after we go through the purchasing excuse me, purchasing process, we're bringing back to you the vendor for your Google, that contract for your approval of council. And then once we have that underway, then we can actually go with getting the survey distributed and promoted, the results tabulated, and then of course, coming back to you to have that presentation of what we learned from this survey exercise. This website update, you know, when we were talking in our our agenda meeting, you know, Mayor, you say, wait a second, where did this come from? What do we need a website update for? We have, we have a good, solid working website right now. It's almost three years old. And I know that sounds young, but in website land, that's actually starting to age a little bit. Actually, last year, the communications team did an audit and we had focus groups and we did what they call heat mapping to better understand how people are using the website. And we found some opportunities for improvement that we want to take advantage of. And then I think we also want to make sure that we have a system where staff can be more empowered to make frequent updates and we're not always relying on our marketing contract to make that happen. And you can see, we're hoping to get that website redesign on July. A vendor selected in August. And then we said fall, how's that for squishy fall is when that work will commence and then hopefully with a new website by the end of the year. And then finally, Timnith Events. Now, this is a conversation that we're continuing from last council meeting. And we have modified the event schedule and the budget for 2020. And we still have some future decisions to make about the Taste in Timnith and the Holiday Lighting Event that we don't need to make tonight. And we do plan to do an RFP for an event vendor in the fall to set us up for success planning for 2021. But tonight, and again, we don't need to make this decision now, but you have about seven minutes until I'm done talking to when you do have to make the decision. But really, tonight, we need to talk about July 4th. And we, a couple of scenarios, we may figure out particularly what to do with the fireworks. As you know, you gave us direction at your last meeting to say, let's add-ons, entertainment, music, all of that were already off the table. What we tried to do is look at, could we make the fireworks show even bigger, even higher? So that you can see it from pretty much any house in Tim. The answer to that is unfortunately, no. So despite all the wiggling and discussions that we've had, really what we have before us is the same level of fireworks show that we originally planned. That can be seen from some, but not all houses in Tim. What we could do is continue with the fireworks show and encourage people to watch from home if they could. And if they can't, we would do a drive in July 4th where people could come to the reservoir, but they'd have to stay in their cars, bring their own food, you know, pack out their own trash, and there wouldn't be any amenities. It would just be the show. So I'll ask you in a little bit what you want to do about that. But I do wanted to just to share with you, we really, really tried to come up with some other options. And I think this is about the most creative we can get, given our circumstances. This really is just a general communications timeline that talks about all the different highlighted projects that we discussed in their earlier slides. It's important to note that we are at the same time still doing all of the basics. We're still working on social media and posting and responding. We are still producing a monthly e-newsletter. We are still producing council wrap ups after each and every council meeting to help people understand what happens here. So while I'm highlighting the big stuff, there's a lot of little stuff that is continuing to move as we work together to keep the community informed. Wow, you didn't even have seven minutes. I think you had like three. So really, here's what I'm hoping I can get from you. One is a discussion or confirmation or feedback on the goals presented to you today. Also, some feedback on the operational guidance that I presented to you today. And then finally, some hard decisions around July 4th and the July 4th concert. So with that, I will be happy to answer any questions that you might have. And perhaps we can work through these in our discussion.
Counselperson, I mean, Mayor Protem Collins.
Yeah, Kim, I think it was Tim with Ranch Resident John Cloud. It sent us, sent the council a lengthy letter with a lot of ideas. And one of the things he had asked about is the ability to take the council wrap up, which I think is real good after each council meeting. That's on our current town website, but see if that can also be put on social media, like on the Timnith Ranch page. And it's it's a good way to get out to the people.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Protem. And Councilmember Hanson also reached out to us and had the same thought of that's a really great succinct summary of what happens at these meetings. And I think we have some opportunity to to further distribute that.
Other comments?
I think everybody was head nodding there, so.
All right, good. So
Looks real good.
July 4th, does, and this is just a, in we, there's no resolution, just is this feel good to everybody? July 4th, have a drive up, 4th of July, everyone needs to stay in their car type of production. And maybe some background to that, we've already spent 35,000. There's no way we get that money back. So what we're risking is 35,000 more. We could forfeit the 30, the first 35. So it'll be a $70,000 fireworks display. We won't have, the suggestion I think Kim's making is that we don't have any events and that we don't put anybody at risk. But we do run the fireworks and we make it so that people can still have fun. It's a drive up event that they can see. Yes, Mayor Boating Collins.
Yeah, I just wonder, maybe it's a question that should be answered by the by Wes or the Chief of Police. The stand in your cars is going to be a nightmare over there. Is there a way to configure that parking lot where maybe we have a little fewer amount of cars and put gaps in between the rows and then tell people they're entitled to behind their vehicle or in front of their vehicle with easy chairs or whatever and they're out? And they're socially separated from the groups next to them?
Do you know our event team has recommended something similar, Mayor Protem? In that we would, you know, only allow parking, somehow designate parking for every other spot with the understanding that we're encouraging people to stay in their cars. But I mean, I can't sit in my car for more than 20 minutes without getting fidgety. So I think they had some some layouts in mind. And I will defer to the chief in terms of any other ideas on how we could really make that work.
Yeah, and it could be pretty hot.
Yeah. My guess is we're going to want to create some leeway that direction. I mean, it's going to be a combination of us trying to lay it out and space it right, but also asking people to step up and do the right thing as well. And I I think we have to grant, I mean, if we're going to go into this and go to the reservoir and do that, there's going to be a a part that we play, but I think there's going to be a part that we trust the public to play as well. So if the council is comfortable with that, that would be, that would kind of be the bifurcation there, Mayor Protem.
The, let me ask who I've got you on there, Wes. Have we thought about what the other jurisdictions are going to do for Collins? And Windsor is in a case where everybody's waiting to see what the other guy's going to do. And maybe it's a case where we we step forward and say, we all do the same thing.
Collins, let me take that the handle on that because I sent all the around here. In fact, that was the first one. I sent all the mayors asking them what they are going to do. And the one that sort of helped me suggest to Kim that I think we could do this is Greeley's going to run the largest fireworks display in Colorado. They spent a whole bunch more on fireworks and they're going to do it. Because our concern was, we're the only one shooting off fireworks. We'd have so many people, it'd just be, if you think Chief Jones's hair is gray now, have it after, so he'd look like you. And so so once we found that out and then talking to Mayor Troxel in Fort Collins, he said that they're going to do something. They haven't decided exactly if they're going to do four locations around town or one location. It definitely won't be at City Park. But you know what they're going to do in talking to the mayor at Windsor? They haven't totally decided, but they're 99% sure they'll shoot them off over the lake again. So I did, just as an aside that I thought was funny, the Mayor of Windsor said, you know, I'm having a tough time getting the town manager to get focused on this because he lives in Harmony Ridge and he's going to watch you guys' fireworks anyway. So that's, that's sort of how. So that's, that's sort of how it evolved is asking some of the other mayors what they're going to do. And then, you know, we, we, that's the suggestion here is, is try. It's one of those things, we've all been cooped up and stuff and, and I don't know. My two bits is, I, I think it's time to let people do the right thing and, and watch a fireworks display.
Absolutely, thank you.
Castle person Lake.
Um, yeah, I was just wondering if we've thought about, so if, if we're somewhat limiting the people who are in there just by like the spacing of the cars. Um, and not knowing exactly yet what other communities are planning on doing. Would we want to look into limiting it to like Timneth residents? Um, or something like that who goes there or um. You know, because that part of me is concerned that people who are in Fort Collins. If they know we're having them, they'd probably much rather come here than drive to Greeley. Um, so same with, you know, potentially some of the other communities, so. I don't know if that's something we want to think about, knowing that we're not going to allow as many people into that area. As maybe have been allowed in the past.
That was from Hanson.
Uh, I, I think uh Councilman, Councilmember Lake has a, has a good suggestion to consider there. Some of that I think we could at least, I, I don't know for sure, but I think we could at least hold off a little bit and see what kind, how the state restrictions continue to loosen. Uh, and, and as we get more clarity on what the other towns are doing before they quite go there out. But yeah, if it comes down to, we need a smaller crowd there, then, then I think we focus on the Timneth residents.
I will put my two bits in from my house, which is in Harmony. Um, I can see the Greeley fireworks display when it was normal incredibly well. Uh, and they've got it out there with a butt where there's a bunch of farms and stuff. I, I don't know, anybody that wants to see a fireworks display are going to drive four or five miles more to, to watch the Greeley. Because it's north Greeley that they put it. I think they'll, they'll drive to Greeley and watch that rather than watch ours, which is going to be a lot smaller. I mean, my two bits. Uh, Chief Jones, do you have any comments on the only Timneth residence uh issue?
Thanks, thank you, Mayor. Um, logistically, the, the reservoir is ingress and egress is going to be problematic. There's only a couple of directions in. There's only one driveway to, you know, up the dirt road to the north. I see that as problematic, the spacing of cars. Um, that's, that's a great thought, but. I don't know what the venue would hold as far as automobiles and one way in, one way out, if you have an emergency. It's going to be difficult to get fire rescue in there or paramedics. Additionally, um, if you isolated it to Timneth residents, I don't know how we bet that. And if you're turning cars away because they don't live in the town of Timneth, now you've got a traffic bottleneck problem. That's going to be associated with, well, my cousin lives in town and I, I mean, you can just see it kind of blowing right out of uh. Uh, uh, out of, out of normal behavior. So al- although I would like to say it would be. A simple uh event to, to, to carry forward, I think it'd be really problematic to handle the volume of cars. That if we're the only jurisdiction in Northern Colorado, aside from Greeley, that maybe having a fireworks display. Um, I, I think people would gravitate towards town. It, it would be great advertising, but um. I think we'd suffer some ramifications on the backside with the inability to get into the venue.
Yeah, Chief, I know that the event um team has often shared that same concern. And particularly with um turning people away at the reservoir, just the fear that they then park on the street. Which really is, um, you know, prevents emergency vehicles from getting where they need to go. You know, there's a surprising amount of parking spaces at the reservoir and I wish I was smart enough to remember the exact number. But I do know that the event team has been working with, um, with parks and probably with your crew as well, Chief. To figure out what is the safe number of cars that can happen at that reservoir to make sure that we still are. Allowing access as we need to for emergency vehicles. And one of the things that you'll notice in the event budget, we cut all the event stuff, but we did not cut traffic control. So that is a, a huge expense, but I think in particular when we look at how does this uh drive-in July fourth come together? That traffic control is going to be really, really important. Um, and, and then I guess I would just say too, I think part of the messaging of what we have to do, if this is the direction you choose. Is to really encourage people to stay home and watch if they can.
Uh, I, I don't disagree. When, when I was checking on the fireworks uh ordinances, I asked uh some of the chiefs of the other agencies. And Mayor, you, you obviously have talked to the mayors and the town managers. What I found was that a couple of agencies moved their fireworks displays to either Labor Day or to an event such as Severance. Their hundred-year birthdays coming up, so that was later in the year. They thought about moving the fireworks to, to that timeframe, which was in the fall. Um, Windsor had talked about moving theirs further off to, because they celebrate fireworks displays on both the Fourth of July. And Labor Day. And then, um, Fort Collins, as I mentioned, we think they were still going to move forward with their show, so. I, I don't know if that helps council with, because money's already been expended, does it have to be spent on the fourth or could it be spent later in the year?
No, so that is your other option. So your other option is to delay the fireworks show. Um, originally, we said we would like to do that in conjunction with the grand opening of Phase Two of the community park. Um, and the summer barbecue, combining all of those into one event. We can still do that. We cannot do that on Labor Day, just so you know, the fireworks are not available, the vendor's not available to do it that weekend. But we could do it, um, I think it's August twenty-eighth, that date is sticking in my head, which is the weekend before Labor Day. So that is absolutely within your purview and we can make that happen. Now, I will say this too, just because, you know, why not make this pro- this decision even more difficult? We, we have no idea what August is going to be like, um, what regulations will be in place at that point. Um, once we decide our reschedule date, that is it. We don't get a third shot with the fireworks vendor.
Comments?
Yeah, my recommendation is we go with July fourth.
Uh, Councilperson Pearson.
I, I like the July fourth, but if other folks uh chose the grand opening of the park. Would that also be at the reservoir for those fireworks or would it be down at the park?
Yeah, so our team is looking at how we need to adjust the show to make sure that it would be at the park in a safe way. We don't have those details yet though, but the intention would be to have it at the park.
Councilperson Hanson.
Uh, I prefer the Fourth of July fireworks, uh, as we've discussed.
Councilperson Lake.
I, I'm kind of torn and part of it, I think is actually, sorry, something that, that you said, Kim, is about how. We're going to encourage people to, to watch from home, yet we're going to have this event, so. Uh, the public health person in me really thinks we should push it off. Um, for those particular safety reasons, um. Just because I, I, I feel like if you're having people in there, people are going to get out of their cars. I know we say trust people, let them make their decisions, but we have to also set an example. And so the public health person in me has to say that I think we should put it off. But I also have some concerns about like the location of the park and having fireworks there and what that would look like as well, so.
For like a private field, we'd have to work with some partners to make that happen, so.
I think, um, I think we got four persons sort of nodding July fourth, so. Um, I, if you're okay, everybody, that we do it on July fourth, then. I know it's not preference on it, okay. Uh, second is the uh, um, July concert series. We've got to, we've got to make a decision now or, or punt on it, so. Uh, we've got another one scheduled for August. We've canceled June. The quite, and this ju- the July concert was to be July fifteenth, I believe. Um, so thoughts on that?
When, when do we have to make a decision final?
We have, we have to make it tonight because uh they have to ha- know by um, May fifteenth.
Do we have any uh guidance from the state on terms of public gatherings in July? I, I assume we don't, but. Okay, so we're, we're looking at canceling it on the assumption that the state will not allow us to have a public gathering at that point.
I think it's, everything I'm reading, I, I have yet to see, read something that says eliminating the ten-person gathering. Rule, so.
I'm just trying to establish the criteria we're looking at for.
They do, they're likely to do it in tranches, you know, they ramped us down in tranches and the, and I'm guessing they're gonna, they're gonna allow us to expand in tranches. So it's not likely to go from ten to a thousand, it's likely, my guess, from what I'm seeing and reading, it's likely to, 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 to. Is it to expand in tranches too?
I, I agree that it's unlikely the ten, the state would allow us. I just want to again establish the criteria of how we're evaluating this, so.
And loo- look what California did today. They said they're going to stay on lockdown in Los Angeles County for three months.
Oh geez. Okay, uh, anybody believe we should continue with the July concert?
I'm taking the leak, Lisa Lake position. The health person in me says no.
You just okayed the Fourth of July. Gathering.
I'm going to be in my house.
You can see that from further away than a concert.
Uh, Kim, is there anything else we need to talk about?
No, um, I would just say you all know how to reach me and I'm always open to suggestions and questions. And um, please take advantage of that. I also wanted to let you know that to make it official, we'll come back. Um, and Robert, you tell me if, what sort of uh, is whether it's a resolution or whatnot, but we'll have you formally adopt that. Adjusted budget because it's a procedure. Um, you won't have to listen to me again because I've been, I feel like talking at you for now two council meetings in a row. So hopefully it will just be a shorter item, but we just want to make sure that we get that on record so that we're held accountable to following it.
There was one other thing there, Kim. Um, I think just, just sort of again, a nod of the heads, is everyone good with the RFP? For the survey?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, Councilperson Lake.
I just have a quick question. Um, in this day and age, would it be possible to allow people to submit them electronically? Rather than the whole in a sealed envelope, all of that, like, I was just thinking as far as conserving paper and. And just getting it there in a timely fashion, if there was a way to just do that.
Yeah, well, um, we will maybe include some language that says we're open to uh suggestions. On the most effective way to get to many people in a timely way. We'll make them tell us how to best do it.
Mayor Protem Collins?
Yeah, two points. Uh, one is the timing of this thing is very critical. And I am concerned about uh still being on lockdown or some kind of lockdown at the same time the survey goes out. Which would uh probably have an impact on the survey itself. So hopefully, if we do an RFP and we do a contract, we put in wiggle room that if we need to hold the survey off for a month. We can do that if we need to, uh, because it, it would influence what people are doing. Some people are going to get upset if the concerts are canceled. And things like that. The second one is, I thought twenty thousand was very aggressive as far as uh, for a survey of this size. Uh, is there going to be any focus groups or is that just what the RFP will bring back in?
So we did not include the cost in the RFP, so I'll be interested to see um how much research our vendors do to find out what their allocated budget is.
Okay.
And so I think we can consider focus groups as well. Again, um, they'd have to be similar to this format as of right now. To figure out the best way to do that, so um, it's not off the table, but it's not a requirement of the survey either. And I think uh surveys are ridiculously expensive, um, perhaps maybe going to a more electronic version might help us save some costs. But there's pros and cons with that and I think we need to rely on our, our market research experts to sort of guide us in what would be most effective.
Sounds good.
Great, thanks, Kim.
Yeah, thank you all, appreciate it.
Uh, one of the things that I think uh Councilperson Lee's uh, uh, Lake has asked is uh broadcasting. And I think Councilman Hanson also is broadcasting our, our uh council meetings. And uh Brian Williamson has a report for us.
Right, um, I did prepare the packet for you, um, for, with the um, research that we did. Um, really what we did was we talked to um, a vendor that we worked with before to outfit the AV systems in the existing town center. And um, just talked to them about adding on to the systems that were in place, just to kind of get an order of magnitude. Um, for what we would be looking at from a time investment and a cost investment for running different scenarios. I outlined um, three different scenarios in the, in the staff report. Uh, I'm happy to walk through those in. As much detail as you guys are interested in, in having, um, or we can kind of jump to just an open discussion about what you guys think. The appropriate uh level of, you know, kind of, there's two things we want to determine is what is the product? That you want to present to the audience, number one, and then number two, what's the appetite for a financial commitment? Both for uh upfront costs and then an operating cost kind of uh per meeting or, you know, how I would phrase that.
I thought you did a great job, Brian, of giving us info, so maybe let's see if people have questions to ask you. Yes, Councilperson Pearson.
Thank you, Brian. I appreciate your work on this. Uh, looking through there, it seems to me if we're going to do this, it should be at a level uh that people can. Really see the information online with uh, if we're seeing something on a presentation, it'd be nice for the public to be also. See that same presentation piece. It looked like scenario B would achieve that. Where it seemed like sort of a, a chintzy way of doing things and not, not to the level that we should, we should probably do it. So I'm guessing, in my opinion, I think scenario B would be great. Scenario C seemed just, I mean, great for a larger municipality. But I think scenario B would achieve a great uh, a goal, the goal that we're trying to achieve without going overboard on cost.
Yeah, in, in scenario A, um, I'm sharing a picture of what that would look like. I think, can you see the uh, see that on the screen there?
Yeah.
You're looking at Facebook. That's kind of the, the view that you would see from the um camera in, in scenario A. Scenario B would be ve- very similar to kind of what we're doing in the Zoom meetings now.
And what? C would be more like what Fort Collins would be, right?
Uh, yes, scenario C, well, so I don't even think Fort Collins has that level. I think they're kind of at a. In between B and C, I think they have a couple more cameras um than that, but I don't think um, scenario C kind of is like, would be like a little. Like a lipstick micro, or camera that would be like right on top of your display screen. Um, so everybody would kind of get the headshot, almost like what you see now. Um, and then there'd be a video editor that's kind of moving that around. And then there'd be a couple of general cameras that would focus on staff and then the presenter or the audience. Um, so we kind of get those wide shots and then some tight shots.
Is this what's on the screen now? Uh, that's scenario one, right?
That, yes, correct. That's the existing camera that we have and that would be kind of the view that you'd see.
And uh, under scenario one, um, we'd be expecting clean audio. Just, just as, because I saw the, the counseling stream from early April. And any audio in the council chambers was a little rough in that stream. Are we, is that part of what the equipment upgrades and scenario one would do is give us good clean audio?
What it would, what that scenario one would be is we'd get a, a rack-mounted um PC that would run. A combination, it would take our video feed from this camera and then the audio that's existing in the chamber, so everybody's mics at the, at their stations. Would all be mixed and then could be broadcast um, right out via um, a stream to either Facebook Live or YouTube or. Um, you know, eventually I think this is something that we'd want to be hosting on our own website, but I think, you know, um, the, the other thing I would like to say is that. There's um, there's a lot of ability here to either phase, if we want to go somewhere in between one and two or two and three. Um, or we can, we can really start with scenario one, try it for a couple of months, a couple of meetings, however you guys want, and then see what. Try it for a couple of months, a couple of meetings, however you guys want, and then see what the feedback is, and we can kind of expand from there as well.
Uh, under scenario one, are we uh needing additional town staff to come into this meeting than we normally have at council meetings or?
I think if if we were comfortable with this static um image, I think um. I, you know, I can get that up and running at the beginning of the meeting and take it down at the end of the meeting, so we wouldn't need additional staff time for that.
Brian, this is Rick. I think uh. Mr. Hanson raises a good point. The the trick's gonna be, the picture's fine, even from a distance like this, the trick's gonna be getting the mics right. So people can understand what's being said, and then the ability, if there's any kind of ability, ability to insert on the bottom of the screen left or right. Uh, what's being shown on the uh. Screens in the room.
Yeah, so once you start introducing a second source is where you need to start having somebody who's kind of mixing those sources together and producing. Um, so, you know, even if we were to just add, say, a separate camera, um, then you need somebody who's who's not. I I wouldn't say fully dedicated, but um. You know, I I think that uh most of the staff now has a role where they are going to be, you know, both. Um, you know, they're gonna be interacting with the council and on a variety of different topics. Um, and I think we could um. There there's probably suites about there where we might have a little bit of of editing that would happen. Um, we also have. Um, uh, some software called iCompass that we run our agendas in. We've been in touch with them. Um, we've been playing a little bit of phone tag over the last couple of days. Um, trying to see how they we could integrate some of that. Um, and but that seems to be a little bit more in the post-production, so. Um, we could, we could take our stream, whatever we end up with, scenario one, two, or three. Um, that, one of those would be broadcast live. Uh, we'd also take that stream and capture it. And then we could kind of timestamp it with the agenda item, so if you. Wanted to say just listen to this part of the discussion of a council meeting, you'd be, there'd be a a web link on the. Um, on the website where you could just click on this agenda item and it would take you right to where we're starting to talk about this. So that's kind of the the post-production um side of this that we'd be posting later, and I think we've been. Um, we have some functionality that we're just trying to explore if if that's an add-on to our existing services or if that's something that we're, we've already got set up.
Sounds good.
Question. So you mentioned something that you could do kind of something in between scenario one and scenario two. Um. Would that just be based on like the number of cameras where we could go less than than the five cameras? Um, because I I do think it would be beneficial for. Community members if they're watching live to be able to see the presentations um that we're seeing. Um, in real time, but I also don't know that we need five cameras mounted or around the room or something like that. So what would that kind of? Hybrid or or the the in-between kind of look like?
So really, a lot of the cost um is really in the backend, so we would need um a fair amount of software. Um, and, you know, like so an additional AV switch and a a dedicated computer to run that, so that's a a fair amount of where that cost is. I wouldn't say that it's a one-to-one, like, you know, if we're, we have five cameras and it's thirty thousand dollars and we take one out, it's gonna be twenty-five thousand dollars or. Um, but I think what what we're happy to do um as a staff is to say, you know, if if the appetite is for, and I'm I'm just. Throwing things out here, we wanna, we we wanna minimally produced stream, we wanna keep our investment in. Uh, you know, fifteen to twenty thousand dollar range, we can investigate what that would look like. Um, if you wanna give us some guidance in any any one of those directions, either what the product wants to be, how much money you wanna spend. Um. You know, at this, at this point, we're really just kind of, we've got a pretty scattershot approach at what we're providing to you guys right now, just trying to get some direction on how to refine our our direction.
I'll make my my two bits is that I'd like, I'd like to ease into it. I think the key and it and I think uh councilperson Hanson said, you know, is the 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 audio. Can they hear what we're saying? Can they uh hear the resolutions and everything like that? Uh, I'm not so concerned about the exhibits because they can go and see all the exhibits on the agenda packet, so. If if they're really interested in seeing the exhibit, they can easily do a split screen and have uh the the meeting and. The agenda there, or if they have two screens like I do, put the agenda on one screen and put the uh. Discussion, you know, the that. Camera on the other. So, you know, I don't, I mean, my my two bits is, we, you know, we're not, we're not producing the Tonight Show or, you know, we're just trying to make sure that. People hear what we're, we've got to say and they can act on it and. Um, quite frankly, the farther the cameras away, the better I look anyway, so I'm sort of for the uh. The latter of that, but I. I'll go with whatever, but my my preference would be scenario one, see how it works for two or three sessions and then make another decision. Uh, uh, councilperson Lake.
Um, I would say that I I'm probably leaning more towards the scenario two because I feel like there have actually been many meetings. In which the presentations are not always in the packet. Um, you know, e- even tonight, just some of the images we've seen so far here tonight are not in the packet. Um, and so I I would lean more towards that, but maybe looking at a way of. Reducing that amount or or however we can kind of navigate that would be my initial thought, just because I do feel like there have been many times where. Um, the information is is not always in there, or there may have been updated information, presentations from. Um, we've had presentations from developers that maybe didn't make it into the packet. Um, and honestly, this is, this is something I've been pushing for for a while too, so that could be part of why I. Um, I I feel like if we're gonna do it, I wanna do it in a very um. And very with with a very strategic um effective way, and so I feel like that would kind of get us to where I think. Um, we would have the the best results.
Uh, councilperson Hanson.
Uh, Brian, if we uh say we started with the basic stream, the scenario one. And then down the road, we wanted to upgrade to scenario two or something moving in that direction. Are some of the costs of those upgrades essentially? Do we do we carry that over? Like, if we do that, the the scenario one upgrade, does that decrease our cost for upgrading the scenario two later? Those overlap?
Yeah, I think that um. What I would probably recommend in that case is we would maybe go with a little bit more high-powered machine. I think scenario one really is a pretty. Bare bones machine, uh, just kind of take the stream, package it up and push it out. Um, we might wanna go with the, maybe we would go with the machine that they're um recommending in scenario two. Um, and just use that so that we wouldn't be wasting that investment if we did wanna upgrade. I don't, I can't imagine that it would be. You know, more than a a thousand or fifteen hundred dollars additional cost into the prices that were listed in the packet.
Okay. I I think uh my general feelings are um. The the continuing expense that was lined out for scenario two, you know, five hundred to a thousand dollars a meeting, I mean, that's that's pushing twenty thousand dollars. Uh, twenty thousand dollars a year. Um, I noticed when you shared your screen, we had about twenty people watching the stream. Um. It's, and I and I and I would expect that number to be to be pretty typical. Um. And, you know, maybe as we, maybe we start with a basic stream and then as we build up our fan base, when the mayor can do some good monologues and all learn to juggle. Uh, you know, maybe then we can look at a little more higher-end stream, but. Um, that those are my general thoughts is is kind of, let's, if the audio's good, I I think we start with something. Basic instead of committing to a recurring cost like that.
You you know, and I'll say.
Mayor put Tim in my column?
No, I I I agree with what Brian was saying. Let's start with the basic, but make sure the building blocks can be added on. And not lose or back have to back up. If he goes with the bigger machine, that's good.
Councilperson Pearson?
Yeah, I I still, I'm probably on more on um council, council member Lake's idea. Uh, oftentimes when a developer comes in, they have a presentation for us that is, that is not a part of the packet. And if people were following along, um, they would, they would wanna know what what's being talked about in these, in these slides. So if we could achieve something between one and two that would allow for the. For the on-screen presentation of whatever we're seeing, uh, that I would like to do that. If we don't have to get all the way to two. Uh, you know, to the second scenario to get there, then that'd be great, but if it takes two to get there, then I'm good with that as well.
So, yeah, I I wanna make sure everybody understands the economics of this. So you you, if we go scenario two, it'll be a hundred thousand dollars. There, we're putting out for twenty people, which is five hundred dollars a person. Is that the kind of money we want to spend? For that kind of view? Yes, uh, Brian.
So scenario two would be a a, you know, a equipment investment between forty-five and fifty thousand. And then we'd be looking at the the ongoing operational costs.
Which is a thousand dollars a time, twenty-four times, it's twenty-four thousand dollars, so we're at seventy-five thousand.
Yeah.
And as you and I both know, it's always higher than what we guess, so I rounded it up.
Perfect.
Well, if we, I, in my mind, if we wanna be transparent and throw it out there to the to the people and the residents to see it. Um, I think this is something that all the other municipalities are doing. If we're gonna do it, we should do it in a way that's 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 proper.
And I I don't think anybody's saying it's not proper. I think giving them the information, as long as you hear the information, you've got the information. I I can't imagine, there's, there's nothing that is not going along, but. Let's, let's, let's just do a a head nod. Um. Uh, councilperson Lake, what would you like to do?
I'm leaning towards scenario two or or however we can get close to having those pieces um in there.
Okay, councilperson Hanson?
Uh, I could, I could get behind a one and a half.
Councilperson Collins?
Uh, one, and maybe we need to do a better job letting people that are gonna come in to present that they need to get that material to us sooner.
Councilperson Pearson?
As long as we could have what we're seeing on the screen, on the screen or available to the residents. I'm good with that, right? If that's, if if that's one and a half, I'm I'm good with that, but if it takes to get to, I'd be good with that as well.
And and my. I I'm one to always, let's try it, see where we are, so I'd like to see us at scenario one. And then if we think it's inferior or that we're not. Uh, being communicating to everybody, then we start moving it up and it might get all the way to two. Um, and I think that's then sort of the consensus too at this point, so we'll be able to take a look. The good thing about one is if we made a mistake, it's easy to fix. We we spend too much on two, we can't backtrack. And then maybe in between, and I like your idea, uh, I think that you said this uh councilperson Pearson. Is let's talk, let's talk after we do a couple of these, talk to those twenty people and say, hey, did you, were you able to follow along? Was there something there that you felt you didn't uh uh get full information on?
Yeah, and I think that once we start streaming these, that attendance number will will increase. Cause I know I've heard people mention it to me before, I'm guessing that that those numbers will increase by, you know, a fairly sizable amount.
We could probably decrease it a lot if we keep these meetings going this long.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, is there a way currently to track? I know you can see how many people are watching live. Is there ever a way to see whether people go back and and view it at a later time? Um, and then, so that was, I guess, the first question, and then second question would be if we're doing scenario one. Um, let's say on Facebook Live, because that's what we use now. Um, is is there a way to at least kind of? Um, is is there ever a way to, you mentioned some of the other benefits or to where you can go to certain parts of it or. Things like that, is that even an option on Facebook Live or um anything like that? Because I I know in the past, I've gone and. Watched Fort Collins council meetings after the fact for a very particular topic. And it's really nice to be able to go on there and just click that um section, so.
Brian or Kim?
Yeah, I will, I'll refer to Kim on the um, on the the views question, and then I can definitely come back on the uh. Um, clicking to the the agenda item.
We can go back and run um engagement statistics on all of our social media posts, so we can keep a close eye on who's watching and who's not. Um, and in fact, it's already become more popular where we have more people commenting during our meetings. I think it's going to be a little bit of education as we get into this space of. How do people weigh in on the topics that council is discussing so that they don't feel like we're ignoring them, whether it's on Facebook or YouTube or otherwise, so. Um, yes, I think one of the commitments we can make is to provide that data for you as we experiment and move forward. And in fact, that's probably something that we would wanna do as a communications team. Use some context of how many people are subscribing to our newsletter and how many people are engaging on Facebook. So perhaps we can add some sort of reporting in there for you to help you make better decisions as you move forward with this.
Great question, Lisa.
And then the the second piece, um, I think we would post that stream probably to our website that would have the interactive agenda. Um, I'm I'm not sure if we'd be able to facilitate that through Facebook Live.
Great. So I think our direction then, Brian, is is let's start with scenario one, see how it goes for two or three meetings and then revisit.
That sounds great. We'll run with that, and then I'll also just do a little bit of um digging on what it would take to incorporate a second. Um, source into there if we need to to show those presentations and see how easily that could be. Uh, folded in for a reasonable cost and we, I'll actually report back on that.
Awesome, thanks so much. Um. Matt, uh, discussion of virtual neighborhood meetings.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I won't, uh, you have in your packet. Uh, the summary of what I was uh gonna be presenting here tonight. Um, last meeting, we did talk a little bit about neighborhood meetings and their purpose. Um, this, tonight's um discussion is about um allowing for some remote or virtual neighborhood meetings and. Um, these are uh becoming more uh. As the, as the stay-at-home and safer-at-home orders are continuing, they're becoming more and more important for uh. Company owners, uh, developers, um. For land development opportunities to be able to do these neighborhood meetings and meet those, satisfy those requirements, so. Uh, what we're requesting or at least suggesting is that. Uh, that we have um some kind of uh allowance for them remotely. Um, did a little research uh over in Fort Collins, Loveland and Windsor uh from kind of a neighboring. Community perspective are all allowing for neighborhood meetings. They're not, uh, it's not spelled out specifically in the code, one way or another, if it's a um. Uh, if it's the venue specifically is that the neighborhood meeting is required, so. Uh, having a neighborhood meeting and allowing it to happen remotely in a similar format to what we're uh looking at here tonight. Uh, or otherwise, um, that we would, we would make sure that there's plenty of uh public engagement. Uh, a good discourse between the um. The applicant and the citizens that are being affected, uh, and then a record of that um. Of that event, uh, which one of our staff members would attend. Uh, so that it would be reported back to planning, commission and council when those actions do come forward. Um, so it, it, there's no real action other than we just wanted to make you aware of. Uh, that we're gonna be starting that process and we're gonna be heavily scrutinizing the. First one, the noticing and everything that goes along with it to make sure that it uh follows uh protocol, so we're. And then, um, if there are some things that don't, don't jive and that we're not really. Uh, excited about and we're not feeling like we're getting in sufficient um public engagement. We will send it back out and have them do it again or come up with another scenario that um that adequately addresses that. In our, in our estimation.
Matt, I asked you a question and and uh earlier and I, and I think you uh telling the rest of the council be worthwhile, and that was. Will the uh virtual meeting have the opportunity for people? To real-time feedback and ask questions during the meeting?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor, uh, reminded me of that. Um. Certainly, uh, and similar to this Zoom call or the Zoom meeting we're having right now, we would, uh, we would have the applicant, uh, request, um, comments in advance of the meeting, potentially if there are some. And then in, in the meeting, depending on the number of people, I mean, obviously if you have a hundred-person turnout, it might get a little unruly. But if there's a way to manage that, there can be just like this where people, um, are in a, uh, in a holding room or a waiting room, so to speak. And if they want to be let in to speak on something, they can be let in, uh, ask their questions, get their comments addressed and then, uh, go to the next person. So it would happen in a real-time, uh, feedback loop.
Awesome. Any, any questions of Matt, everybody? Okay. Great job. Last point, uh, committee template. And I think everyone's read the, the report. I think the, the first question, everybody feel good about the member application? Councilperson Lake?
I just have a question about will that be something that people are able to fill out online? I'm all about online forums if they can rather than signing and sending stuff in. And there's so many different tools that we can use to do that. Is that something that we can have as an option?
Wes?
Uh, we can certainly look at that and see if that's an, uh, option I can get with Kim and.
Here we go. Kim, Kim popped up. Go ahead, Kim.
I, I feel confident we can make that happen.
Perfect.
Great. Thanks, Kim.
Yeah.
Let's see, this, so we, we've identified our three committees. We, their, uh, next meeting we're supposed to get from, uh, town attorney Rogers, the, um, organization minutes or organization, uh, articles, I guess, for each of the committees. And so he's going to have those ready for us to review and either approve or make adjustments to and stuff like that. The question, I guess they want to know is on the member application, uh, how long to put it out there? Any special request for committee member, special qualifications for committee members? And then, uh, council priorities during the vetting process. So I'm going to start with the vetting process and, and you must, I think you did this, Wes, and yeah. So I was under the impression that the council would, um, select the committees. Is that what you were intending there?
Uh, so once you approve the committee docs and forms and et cetera, et cetera, then it was my understanding that we would put application out there and then those residents whom applied, the council would then decide whom to place on the, on the committee, just like the council decides the liaison committees. Yes.
So I don't understand priorities during the vetting process. I mean, I, what you just said is the way I understood it too. So I don't know which, what staff wants to know about the vetting process since the vetting process will be done by council.
Uh, yeah, no, just looking to confirm that. So.
Okay.
Just in the way that you, um, last meeting went through and decided, uh, who was going to be liaison to what committees and roles. I just want confirmation that, that the council as a whole plans to, um, uh, direct staff to put the application out there and then to combine those or compile those applications, provide them to you. And then council will adapt time to put on those committees.
Great, Wes. Thanks. I, I'm going to just throw this out here to keep moving along. Two weeks to put out this member application, is that reasonable, unreasonable? Two weeks, okay? Everyone nod or shake their head no? Go ahead, councilperson Pearson.
Uh, don't we need to put out some kind of a mailer? Or I mean, how are we going to alert people to put this out? We only have, uh, a certain percentage of the people that are looking online or on our, um, email notifications that go out.
Comments? I, I guess my initial reaction, although I, councilman, councilperson Pearson is that the people that'd be interested in it are probably watching our website and probably watching those. But that's not necessarily true. So I, I, I don't have any problem with you saying, nah, that's not right. Let's do something else. So go ahead.
And when we've done the, these for the planning commission, uh, he, I've been, we've, we've had this out to call that I've been involved with maybe five or six times over the years. And each year increasingly we get more people applying. I think we had, oh gosh, seven or eight people that applied for one position last time. So I, I really think that the postcard or the normal, um, avenue that we do for a larger mailing would be in order.
Okay.
And do we want the, well, do we want the, uh, Mayor, do we also want the committee documents to be finalized? So the participant, uh, the, the potential applicants can actually understand what they're applying for?
That's probably makes sense. I mean, is everybody agree with that? Yeah. So let's hold off on talking about member applicant. I, uh, councilperson Pearson, I agree with you on that. So, and, and postcards are fairly cheap. So Kim, if you could, you know, sort of think about this thing sort of on a, a letter format, think about a way that we can put this on to, uh, you know, a postcard or, or maybe the postcard just directs them to our website to do it. I don't know what the best way is. You're, you're the marketer.
Yep. We'll make sure it gets done.
Okay. Any last questions? Everyone's still awake. We did good. So, uh, do I?
Mayor, the only.
Motion to adjourn?
I'm sorry, Mayor. The only question that I had is, are there any, um, specialized, uh, qualifications that, that the council wants us to make sure to include in these, uh, organizational resolutions? Any criteria for, uh, for applicants that you want included in, in these applications?
Other than being a resident of Timna?
Yeah, good point.
I mean, they gotta be a resident of Timna, right?
Right. Right.
And other than that, I'd hate to put a, a limiter factor on it. But I'll, anybody else have a thought?
Well, the application itself asks, uh, what they consider to be their specialized qualifications.
It does. It's correct. Right.
But I think that then tells, correct me, correct me, uh, Mayor Pro Tem. I think that's them listing out like their resume. Correct. Then limiting them to saying you gotta have a college degree or something like that.
Correct.
Did we answer your question, Robert, or?
Well, in, in particular on the finance committee, uh, there, there'd been some conversation amongst staff about whether, whether there should be any specialized requirements. And, and I, I think that, Mayor, I think you, you had some views on, on the matter. And I just, I wanted to, wanted to raise the question before we bring the resolution back because current, currently we were, we were looking at structuring it so that there, there is some kind of specialized requirement that they have some kind of background in, in finance or accounting or, or something.
I wouldn't want to, I don't think I'd want to. I mean, I would think that a person that's the CFO of a Fortune 500 might have a better chance of getting on than somebody who's never done anything that relates to finance. But on that side, you know, somebody that is, um, astute and, and understands, uh, issues on finance, you know, or, or negotiating skills, you know, that we might run into, uh, might be better than having somebody that has a CPA degree. So I don't, I don't, I'm sorry if I led you that way, Robert. I, I don't have any, um, preconceived ideas of what it should be.
No, no problem at all. Uh, just, just wanted to raise the, the question. But we'll have the resolutions back for your consideration at the next meeting.
Okay, uh, councilperson Lake?
I just have a quick question. Are we planning on calling the references that are listed in the application? Or is it just something we ask that we will never use? Because I've seen people ask for that and if you never use it, I don't know why we would ask for it. So just kind of a, just a question.
I would hope we would. Go ahead, councilperson Pearson.
I can, I can tell you what we've done with the planning commission in the past.
Great.
We've looked at the, we've looked at the applications that have come in and then the counts, the people that are deciding, uh, then narrow it down based on the qualifications and the resumes to select a number, maybe three, four, whatever that number would be, then call to make sure we know where they're at there. Call them back in for a second interview, the three people. So we would, so we would vet the people initially. Then we would meet with the three, with the three or four people. Maybe you get it narrowed down to one or two, to a reference call. And then if it was down to two, you would have a second meeting with them. And then, well, in this case, we do staff or with the planning commission, we did staff, but we probably wouldn't with the committees. And then, but if you needed to interview them again, way after the reference call, then make a decision after that.
That's a great template.
I was just hoping it was actually utilized.
Great template, uh, councilperson Pearson. Any other comments? Now, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
The roar is everyone's saying yay. Go, we need a roll call, Melissa. Uh, you're on, you're, you're, you muted yourself. That's okay.
Mayor Pro Tem Rick Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Aaron Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Lake?
Yes.
Councilmember Brett Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Mark Sukup?
Yes. Great job, everybody. We got a lot accomplished. So good job.
Thank you.